At this time, I would announce that the floor is open to receive nominations for the position of Chair.
I nominate Jim Polittis for Chair.
Supervisor Tuck nominates.
I'll second that.
Supervisor's being second.
Move that the nominations be closed. Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the nominations. I guess all those in favor, do you have to do a roll call for that?
No.
Not to close.
Okay. All right. All those in favor of closing the nominations say aye.
Aye.
All right. We have one nomination for Chair, and that is Jim Polittis. And I guess we still need to vote on that, Marty?
Yes, sir.
All right. Roll call, please.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair Polittis?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The floor is yours.
Did that come with the provision of no help?
Yeah, no help. You only heard about it, don't want to smell it, don't want to hear it.
Let's quit talking about it, see if he's there.
Can we just be quiet? Don't want to know about it.
The next item of business is the election of our Vice Chair. Do I have a...
I like to nominate Bill Brown.
Second.
Okay. Nomination for Mr. Bill Brown.
Move that the nominations be closed.
Second.
Okay. Moving second on the nominations, all in favor of closing the nominations, please say aye.
Aye.
And all in favor, or I guess, Bill Brown being our nominee, roll call, please.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair Polittis?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right.
Congratulations.
Thank you all.
All for talking down, Mrs. Brown.
The next item of business is to go into closed meeting, be resolved at the Board of Supervisors here by enters into closed meeting for the purposes of the following. Section 2.2-3711, Run Number Five, Discussion Concerning a Perspective Business or Industry or Expansion of an Existing Business or Industry Where No Previous Announcement Has Been Made of the Business or Industry Interested in Locating or Expanding Its Facility in the Community. And that is Project 2013001. And then dash three is Discussion and Consideration of Acquisition of Real Property for Public Persons.
You got show.
Or the Disposition of Publicly Held Real Property Where Discussion of an Open Meeting Would Adversely Effect the Bargaining Position or Negotiating Strategy for the Public Body. And that is Falling Branch Industrial Park, Texas Hollow Road Property, and Courthouse Property. And then Number Seven is Consultation with Legal Counsel and Briefing from Staff Members or Consultants Planning to Actual or Probable Litigation or Such. Consultation or Briefing in Open Meeting Would Adversely Effect the Negotiating or Litigating Posture of the Public Body in Consultation with Legal Counsel Employed or Retained by Public Body Regarding Specific Legal Matters Requiring Precision of Legal Advice by Such Counsel. And that'll be the fair view home. Do I have a motion, please?
Sound moved.
Second.
Then move in second, roll call, please.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Chair Polittis?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right. We're now in closed meeting. Okay. I'd like to resume our meeting. The first item is to go out of closed meeting. Do I have a motion?
No. Second.
Then move in second, roll call, please.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Chair Polittis?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
And the next item is a Certification of Closed Meeting Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County Has Convened in a Closed Meeting on This Date Pursuant to the Affirmative Recorded Vote in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom and Information Act and whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia Requires the Certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be resolved, the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in a closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Then move in seconded, roll call, please.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Chair Polittis?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right. All right. The next item is our invocation, and following that we'll have our Pledge of Allegiance, and let's please take a moment and consider the things that are before us tonight.
Let us pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
The next item is our organizational matters, and the first item is the selection of a regular meeting date. And so far, we have been meeting as is for the last several years. Anybody have any suggestions or concerns about the times and dates?
Do you need a motion, mister?
I think I need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Moving seconded, discussion on time, date of our meetings?
Just for those, I was just going to say, just for those that may not know, that will be to confirm the second and fourth Mondays of each month, beginning at 6:00 PM for closed session if needed, and 7:00 PM for the regular meeting.
Okay. Now for the discussion, roll call, please.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Chair Polittis?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right. The next item is Rules of Order and Parliamentary Procedure. Do I have a motion, please?
Sound moved.
Second.
Then move in seconded, discussion. Okay. I guess we'll follow what we've had in the past. Sound roll call, please.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Chair Polittis?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right. The next item is Code of Ethics and Standards of Conduct. Do I have a motion, please?
Sound moved.
Second.
Then move in seconded, any discussion on any changes or... Okay. Roll call, please.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair Polittis?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right. The next item is our delegations, and I'd like to invite Jay Guy from VDOT, please, to come and speak with us.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. I'm Jay Guy, Virginia Department of Transportation. I'm here tonight to give you a very brief overview of two studies that the department is conducting within Montgomery County. First is a, on a seventeen mile section of Route 11460 between Interstate 81 and Exit 118 through Technology Drive, which is basically the end of the current construction project that's being undertaken between the city of Salem and Roanoke County. The first corridor is a seventeen mile section of 11460. It extends through the villages of Shawsville and Elliston, the communities of Christiansburg and Glenver, and through both Roanoke and Montgomery Counties. The second corridor is a approximately nine mile section of Route 8, again from Interstate 81 and Exit 114 to State Route E63, River Lane, which spans through Montgomery County and communities of Christiansburg and Ryanair. The focus of these studies will be on operations, access management, and safety for all modes of transportation. The studies are being conducted simultaneously but independently. They will be separate public meetings, separate reports and findings, et cetera, conducted and put together for both of these studies in both corridors. The planning horizon year will be 2035 to help establish a future vision for the corridors. And we are also, as part of the study, is going to be developing alternatives and recommendations for short, midterm, and long range time spans with also including probable cost projections for the recommendations that are included in these studies. One thing I want to point out is what the study will not address. These studies are not going to be engineering or design for specific improvements along the corridors. They will not address specific site layouts for private properties that may front the corridor. They also will not automatically be incorporated as into the county zoning or land use plans. That's something that the governing bodies will have to do once the studies are complete. And specifically, they will also not necessarily, while they're going to incorporate, be understanding that there's I-81 Incident Management. That's being conducted separately as part of the I-81 Study, the NEPA, Tier Two Environmental Assessment that's kind of going. And there's also the Auckland Schools Plan on Route 8 that's been done by the county, I believe. And this will, these studies will incorporate those, but not specifically address any of the improvements or product design improvements that are associated with that. These are just overall corridor looks for long-term future operations and safety. These corridor studies are being conducted as a team effort between VDOT. We have our planning folks, traffic, land use engineers, et cetera, involved, as well as Montgomery, Roanoke Counties, and the town of Christiansburg is on our team, as are the Roanoke Valley Planning District Commission and NPO, the Inar, New River Valley Planning District Commission, and then New River Valley NPO as well. And these studies are being conducted in conjunction with a consultant from Kimley Horner and Associates. The studies will be looking at intersections as well as overall corridors. The 11460 corridors specifically, near the Western Virginia Water Authority Treatment Plant, West River Road, Dixie Caverns, Campbell Drive, Down Hollow Road, Gardner Street, North Fork Road, Allegheny Spring Road, and again, those are specific intersections, but it'll also look at all the operations along the corridor. And for Route 8, specific areas of intersection study will be Children's Road, Route 675, Smith Creek Road, Camp Carries Brook, and Life Drive, which is Route 1295. Again, today, wanted to spread the word about two public meetings that are coming up next week on 11460 on January 22nd at 5:00 PM at the Elliston Fire Department. We're having a public information meeting that will be to present the existing conditions, overall corridor findings thus far, and to seek public input for the studies, which is vital to the success of the study and make sure we've got what the community's looking for. And then the following day, following evening, the Route 8 Study will be on January 23rd at 5:00 PM at the Ryanair Fire Department. Again, just a very brief overview of the studies we're conducting. Anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer it. But again, looking forward to public support at these meetings and successful study.
Okay. Mr. Creed?
Yeah, the time for the one at the Elliston Fire Department, is that five o'clock?
Yes, sir. Both meetings will be a 5:00 PM open house, and then there'll be a specific presentation given at 6:00 PM on both minutes.
Any other questions or comments of the Board?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, the... I'm trying to get this back off.
Our next delegation is John Aldridge of Brown Edwards and Company. John, glad you're here tonight, and John's going to talk to us about the recent wrap-up of the fiscal year 2012 cap.
Thank you all for having me. I'm John Aldridge of Brown Edwards and Company. I think Ms. Hill put at your desk a copy of the financial report, if you don't have one with you, so you can kind of flip through the pages as I go. We will keep this informal, so if you have any questions as we go, please stop me. As you're aware, state law requires me to come each year and present the audit, giving the results of work that we perform, and that's why I'm here this evening. And one of the things I want to mention as we start, our audit also includes the EBA as well as the school system, so they're included in this, as well as the PSA. So all of them included in the audit that you have before you. The reason you have an audit each year, and the reason you hire us, is to put an opinion on your financial statements. We also have to look at compliance of laws and regulations, and then we also have to test federal money that comes through the county. So again, I want to go over that tonight with you as you look in the report. So if you have the report in front of you, I'm just going to have a few pages, and you can stop me if I skip one you want to talk about. But if you start it on page number one, flipping in, where you see Brown Edward's letter there, it says Independent Auditor's Report. You want to focus in on the third paragraph, where it says, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to are presented fairly and all material respects." This is known as an unqualified or a clean opinion. This is the highest level of assurance we'll put on a financial report. So again, the county received a clean opinion on their financial statements this past year. All right? If you flip over one page to page number 3A, it's known as the Management's Discussion and Analysis. In these nine pages that follow, there's some very good summarization of the things that happened this past year to the county from a financial standpoint. Your staff likes this Management's Discussion and Analysis, and quite frankly, they do a very good job describing what happened this year. The goal is for readers to look at these nine pages and get a real flavor of the transactions this past year at the county. So emphasize that, so you can really spend a little time reading those nine pages, talking about the changes. Okay. Starting on page number five, we have the financial statements themselves. And you can see the statement of net assets. Just want to point out a couple of things here. You'll notice there are two columns as you start from going from left to right. Governmental activities, that will be your general fund primarily. Those are the things that are supported by tax revenue, the money from the state and federal government primarily. So that's why they call them governmental activities. The next column right to the right of that, the business type activities, that's your water and wastewater. The reason they call those business type, they are set up like a business, meaning there are user fees in place to cover the cost. So that's why it's called a business type activity. And then you can see as you work from left to right, you have the columns, School Board and Economic Development Authority. I want to touch on the school board again here in a second when I show you the fund statements. This statement of net assets, as we talked and have talked in the past, this is on the accrual basis of accounting, just like any business. Debt shows up as debt. When you buy an asset, it shows up as an asset and gets depreciated. It's just like the business, the accounting here, okay? It's unique to a government that you have this statement, as well as some fund statements in the back. Okay. If you flip over page number seven, this is probably more of what you're used to seeing. This is the balance sheet, and this is what they call modified accrual accounting. This is how governments operate day-to-day for the most part. And you can see the general fund. You've got your assets, you've got your liability, and then you can see fund balance at the end. And fund balance is now broken into five categories. That changed last year. And if you went to note number one, your financial statements, you can see a definition of each of those categories. And it goes from most restricted to least restricted as you go top to bottom, from non-spendable down to unassigned. And you can see your fund balance in the general fund was $40 million at the end of the year. Okay? All right? If you flip over two pages to page number nine, you see your revenues and expenditures. And again, paying attention to the general fund column. Your total revenues for the year were $102 million. Your expenditures were $96 million. So your excess of revenues or expenditures of the general fund for the year were $5.8 million. And then again, below that, you can see some transfers. And so for the year, fund balance in the general fund increased $6.7 million. All right. Couple more pages over. If you go to page 12, you can see the breakdown of the water and wastewater. And there we have what we call proprietary statements. And again, this is just a further breakdown of what we discussed on Exhibit 1. All right. Starting on page number 15, we have the notes to the financial statements. And they're used to explain certain balances in the financial report. They describe some of your bases of accounting, describe some of the actual numbers of what makes those numbers up, very consistent to what you're used to seeing. I do want to point out on page number 47, and again, if I skip something you want to talk about, please, please stop me. But on page 47, I want to draw your attention to a couple new accounting standards that are on the horizon. Now, it feels like the dust just settled on this thing called other post-employment benefits. Remember, we had to go through that exercise. We book a liability for other post-employment benefits, meaning if an employee can stay on the insurance of the county, there's a value to that, so we have to determine a liability for that. You've got an actuary that does that. Well, there's something that's on the horizon that ought to get your attention, and it's on page 47, and it's the third item, and it's called GASB Statement Number 68, Accounting and Financial Reporting for Pension Plans. It replaces the requirements of GASB Number 27 and Number 50. As you know, you have a pension, okay? The way that's accounted for now is you write the check. As an act page, you go. You cut a check, the money goes into a trust, and that's the extent of it from the financial reporting. What's changing now, they're going to look at your trust account, and they being an actuary, will come in and look at the liability that's out there. What is the pension that we have at the county? And this also includes school board as well. What is our pension obligation, and how does that compare to the assets we have set aside? And what's going to happen then is if you have a, what we call a liability, meaning the pension obligation is greater than the amount you have in trust, you're going to need to put that liability in the books, okay? This takes place in 2015, so it's a couple of years off, but it's something you need to be aware of. I don't think the county, as of yet, and Ms. Hill can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think you've had an estimate what that number's going to be, you know, an exact figure, but I will tell you this, it's something you need to look at, because one of the critical components of that is going to be the discount factor. Then an actuary's going to come in, when they determine the liability, they're going to put a discount factor on it as they're looking it out. And one of the things they're going to really key in on is do we have a funding policy? Do we have a funding plan for this pension? And that's going to affect your discount factor, which also affects the liability. So again, the implementation guides aren't even issued yet, and this thing is kind of hot off the presses, but I did want to make you aware of it. But it's coming, it's going to be a liability. It doesn't change the fact you have a pension, that's still there. It's just the fact that now we're going to have to put it on our books as a liability, and you've never had to do that in the past. Any questions on that in particular?
Any questions?
So does that affect in any way, like when you're dealing with going out and getting bonds or that kind of thing?
It's, I'll speak to it this way. It's still so new, we don't know, but it is going to be now a liability that's going to go in your books. When you're compared to your peers, that's something we're going to look at. Because the theory is, here's an obligation, our hands are, the theory, kind of, we're tied. We've got this out there that we have to pay, and what's our plan? So I would assume bond counsel and bond radiations, you're going to take that into account.
But the good thing, I guess, if there is a good thing about that, is all governmental agencies will have to do it, so it's not...
You mean a state would have to do it too?
Yes. It affects any governmental entity.
Well, they're way behind. That'd be interesting.
It's very, it's, I can tell you this, from the conferences I go to, it's not real popular. It's not, it's not a real popular standard.
Does that mean that we're going to have to set aside a lot more dollars in order to be where we need to be on this thing?
For me to speak to that right now is premature. I think until you have that actuary or a study done, it's hard to answer that. I will tell you this, if you look at page number 39, look at page number 39 of the report, at the bottom of page 39, and you can see the second section where it just says County of Montgomery. Right there is the analysis of funding progress for the defined benefit pension plan, and you can see based on June 30th, 2011, you had set aside $51.5 million in assets, your calculated liability is $68.8 million. So right there is a deficit of $17 million in that particular item, okay? Again, the calculation's going to be tweaked a little bit, but again, that just gives you a sense of the type of numbers we're talking about.
And that's, in Montgomery County, our numbers like that, Fairfax County, Henrico County, some of those large counties, it's hundreds of millions of dollars. And so that's, that's something that I know Angie and the finance directors are watching real closely, and I think GASB's getting a tremendous amount of feedback on that, too.
It's, like I said, it's not popular. It's one of the standards that's...
That's the reason I asked that question in that way, because it sounds to me like a lot of dollars is going to be gotten from somewhere in order to set aside to make you write it in.
Well, I agree with John's comment. A lot of that discussion right now is premature, because as it affects us, it's going to affect every local government, and so there's a lot of discussion that's going to have to be had before that's implemented.
Well, do you think it affects them percentage-wise? Is that how we're looking at it? Are they going to let someone who has a great big liability get by with half as much as others?
No, no. No, they will ensure, what GASB's trying to do, and not to get too far into that, what GASB's trying to do is ensure more consistency among all the governmental entities. And what they're trying to do with these unfunded liabilities is to show them like they've required businesses to show them. But it, it works a little different in government, and I'm afraid that it's really going to... The question came up earlier about bond ratings. That's one of the huge questions as administrators we've had, is what in the heck's that going to do when you throw that kind of number on a balance sheet? What's that going to do to the bond ratings? And again, if it's, you know, 17, 20, 25 million for us, but it's 200 or 300 million for Henrico or Fairfax, it's a, it's a whopper of a number.
What does that have to do with VRS?
With VRS, it has to do with the, on our books, it would be the portion of the teacher's retirement that we are ultimately responsible for funding. I believe that's right.
Right. We'll push it back to you.
Right.
That's what's going to happen.
It all is VRS. That's what it all is.
Right. That whole liability's VRS. We got quite a ways to go before we have to start walking down that trail, but it, but I appreciate John mentioning it, because it is something that's got the attention of a lot of folks, and we're trying to figure out how to mitigate that before it hits.
If you had some idea of what was going on, you could kind of get ready for it, to sit here and wait three years and then it hits.
Oh, no, no, we won't do that.
That wouldn't work too well.
Right. And I think, and I would strongly encourage you to, to go through the exercises, because again, until that implementation guide comes out that kind of walks you through how to go about recording this and all the facets of it, it's kind of just wait. And we expect that, we being the accountants, probably in the next six months or so, you will be seeing something come out. But again, the other thing I want to mention, speak to you one question, there will be consistency, I mean, there are standards that you have to go through to come up with this liability. Actuaries have to go, I mean, there's a, there are a couple different methods they can use for this calculation, but they're all very structured, and so it isn't apples and apples type thing.
Is there a reason, I understand in business and industry, I just don't understand about the government part of it.
I can tell you the thought behind it. The thought is transparency, to let citizens know all the obligations that are out there for a locality, to get it on, to get it on paper, to show, you know what, we've got these pensions out there that we've promised these folks, that are guaranteed, you know, that are out there, here's what the liability is, here's what we've put in trust, okay? We still have a shortfall, and we've got this pension out there. What's happened, though, is everybody just pays as you go. We paid it as we go, the money's always been there.
Yeah.
Well, from a transparency standpoint, we would say, well, that's not the whole picture. We want to know what our obligation is, and that's kind of what's come and driven this from the GASB standpoint, those are the people that write this language. And again, it makes you consistent with the business, because they've had to disclose these things for years, so...
Well, government's not a business, we don't have too much profit, do we?
No.
We really don't.
We have a lot of expenses, yes, ma'am.
Like I said, in my eighteen-plus years of doing this, it's probably the second most unpopular thing I've seen come through a government accountant. It's very unpopular, very unpopular. I won't tell you what's first, but the, the other thing I want to point out to you, on page fifty-one, you often ask the question about schools, starting on page fifty-one, you have the actual school financial statements there, and they're in here, and you can see the operating fund and the school cafeteria fund, you can see their balance sheet, their revenue expenditures, and then on page fifty-three, their budget. On page number fifty-five and fifty-six, as I said at the beginning, we have to test the federal dollars that are spent at the county. And this past year, you can see the total is twelve point five million dollars the county spent in federal dollars. We test over fifty percent of that. There's a page I'll show you in a few minutes that shows you the programs that we tested, but this past year, the county got twelve point five million, and again, that twelve point five includes the county and school system as well, so that's part of the total there. All right, starting on page fifty-seven, statistical section, really some good historical data in here, I would encourage you to read this, there's some neat things in here, again, being the accountant, I like this stuff, but on page sixty-one, I would encourage you to look at that chart in particular. On page sixty-one, you have the changes in fund balance, governmental funds, for the last ten years. And what you can see, the top section on page sixty-one, you've got your revenues for the last ten years, and the bottom section, you've got your expenditures. And one of the, an item I really think you'll look at, look at the last item in the revenue section, intergovernmental. In two thousand and three, your intergovernmental revenues were seventeen million dollars. In two thousand and twelve, your intergovernmental revenues were eighteen point two million dollars. So in ten years, the money from the state and the feds have only gone up a one point two million dollars at the county, okay? It's not a lot. When you look at your other expenditures and how they've changed over the years, the federal dollars and state dollars have only gone up a million in that timeframe. And again, you can see all the other items that have changed in that period. Do, just want to point that out.
What, what happened back in ten, and nine, and nine, you know, they were higher, and then it comes back down. Is there some prime origin as to why?
As far as... Okay. Ms. Hill mentioned, that also includes the capital project, so if you had a project that was funded, the feds or the state were going to help you out with, it would show up in those years. All right. Then, a couple, the last thing I want to mention in this report, if you go to page seventy-eight, you have the schedule of findings and question costs. I often refer to this as the report card for the audit, because it summarizes everything. See A1, we had an unqualified opinion. Item A6, there were no findings related to the major programs we looked at. So, out of these eight of sort of programs, you can see in section seven, we tested compliance with the federal requirements. And looking at those programs, looking at the controls over those programs, looking to make sure the funds were spent appropriately, there were no findings at all. So that's something that you're to be commended upon, and the folks that are running those programs, that's indication they understand those programs, the compliance requirements. And again, you can see that some of it's social services related, some of it's school-related as well. Okay? And the last thing, that same section on page seventy-nine, the state has us go through at least fifty specific tests we have to do. The auditor of public accounts wants us to look at certain things. And in doing those, there really is no concept of materiality, and it could be something small, and the state requires us to disclose it. And in doing that, you can see in section D, there are three things after, had to be included in the report this year. Twelve-one, what that simply means, there was an employee that left employment in social services, and there are a certain number of days that you have to get their authorizations removed, and it's, I think it's three days. And if it's done on day number four, we have to put it in this report, okay? So that was just a thing that's been taken care of, but the credentials weren't removed in a timely manner. The other item, twelve dash two, as you're aware, disclosure statements you all had to fill out, there were a few folks that did not get those in on time, and again, that's going to report. And the last one, there was an account, a cash account, that was not marked as public funds. Again, it just requires a call to the bank, which has been taken care of, and just indicate that those are, in fact, public funds. And again, those are, what I would gain, my issues, and just state the things the state has to look at. But in summary, again, you had a clean opinion, twelve point five million dollars, you looked at over six and a half million dollars of federal money, there were no findings, all those were compliant, and again, a clean opinion that covers not only the county, the school system, and the EDA as well. So with that, we have to answer any other questions you all have.
Any other questions with board members? Thank you, Mr. Aldous, very much.
Thanks, Sean.
The next item on the agenda is public hearings. The following public hearings were advertised pursuant to law in the Burbs section of the Roanoke Times, December thirtieth, two thousand and twelve, and January sixth, two thousand and thirteen. And the first public hearing is fiscal year two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen county budget. I'll turn it over to Mr. Motters.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight is just an opportunity for any citizen comment. As you're well aware, we are in the beginning stages of the preparation for the fiscal year two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen budget. That doesn't hardly seem possible, but we're beginning to work on that now. Staff has already submitted requests to the administration to begin to assemble the budget, and we'll be reviewing that with you more in a couple of weeks, but this public hearing this evening is just for any citizen that would like to make any general comments about concerns or thoughts that they have for the upcoming budget.
Okay, and we have one speaker signed up to speak this evening, and that's Ms. Barbara Skinner, if you'll come forward, and y'all have five minutes, please, and state your name and address.
My name is Barbara Skinner, and my address is thirty-five eighty-three Laurel Drive in Blacksburg. The school board is again reporting a budget crisis and will likely ask for a funding increase which would result in a five cent increase in property taxes. This, of course, would come just one year after a twelve cent property tax increase. Frankly, our current budget crisis can be readily solved. MCPS currently spends eighty-eight percent of its operating budget on employee compensation, whereas the national average is roughly eighty percent. Further, this average of eighty percent will likely fall for two reasons. The National Center for Education Statistics has reported that the number of students per teacher in America's schools has decreased from twenty-nine point six to fifteen point five over the last fifty years. Unfortunately, our NAEP scores, sometimes called our nation's report card, have been flat for decades, so there has been a national awakening to the fact that reducing class sizes has not led to improved academic outcomes. But unfortunately, this message hasn't sunk in locally. Additionally, we're on the cusp of large changes in education due to digital learning. Blended education, where traditional instruction is combined with digital learning, reduces the number of staff needed and also provides for differentiated learning, which facilitates progress, whatever the individual readiness level of the students. We should be able to increase class sizes without harming quality. Superintendent Blackburn has stated that increasing class sizes, just an average of one pupil per classroom, would save two point five million dollars. Secondly, we can curb this crisis by taming bloated administrative costs. Benjamin Scaffidi, who earned his PhD in economics from the University of Virginia and has done much research in education, has reported that Virginia would have saved two point one billion dollars between fiscal year nineteen ninety-two and fiscal year two thousand and nine if administration and non-teaching staff had increased at the same rate as the student increase. In MCPS, only forty-seven percent of our employee compensation pie goes to instructional staffing. How about, for example, eliminating a curriculum coordinator position and offering a couple or three teachers the opportunity to earn a significant salary increase by managing curriculum issues? Thirdly, MCPS continues to operate an expensive inclusion model for special education students, which unfortunately misses state proficiency targets by almost twenty percentage points. We could save millions of dollars by increasing class sizes, decreasing administration, and using a better but less costly inclusion model. What could we do with some of this money we would save? We could offer higher beginning salaries to teachers to attract high-quality applicants, and we could offer salary increases to teachers who are willing and able to accept leadership responsibilities. This is a current focus in education reform, hiring, elevating, and rewarding quality teachers. The current status quo isn't where we want to remain. Just take a look at our most recent math SOL scores. Our scores took a dramatic dive when more rigorous tests were introduced, and the Virginia Department of Education has plans to make all SOLs tests more rigorous. Math was just the first subject tackled. Lest you think I'm off in Ryan Field somewhere with these comments, here is how Education Secretary Arnie Duncan began an address to the American Enterprise Institute in November of two thousand and ten, and I'm quoting. "I am here to talk today about what has been called the new normal. For the next several years, preschool, K-12, and post-secondary educators are likely to face the challenge of doing more with less. My message is that this challenge can and should be embraced as an opportunity to make dramatic improvements. I believe enormous opportunities for improving the productivity of our education system lie ahead if we are smart, innovative, and courageous in rethinking the status quo. In summary, I would like to say that our school board wants to fixate on spending, though everyone in this country by now should know that our nation's high level of spending has not led to high quality in education. Our school board needs to jettison the constant whining for money and their slavish devotion to the status quo. What we need are smarter budgets and smarter schools. Please say no to their requests for more spending. We must stop feeding the status quo beast. Thank you."
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak to the board in this public hearing? Please state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes, please.
Hi, I'm Heather Cops, I live at one zero zero six Morning Dove Drive in Blacksburg, and I don't have anything prepared tonight, but since there weren't a lot of people speaking, I thought I'd take this opportunity just to say thank you for the county conversations opportunities that you offer in the fall. I really appreciated that, I thought it was a good opportunity for us to hear a little bit about what you thought, and for us to be able to speak to you kind of one-on-one and have some dialogue. I really liked the opportunity to have dialogue, I think that's very valuable, because in these kinds of environments, we get to talk, but you don't get to respond. So I think that if you can do that in the future, as we get into some of these budget conversations where there's actually an opportunity to respond, that would be really positive. And I do support public education, and I think our previous speaker had some very interesting things to say, and I'd love to hear her say that to the school board, because they have a lot of control over what it is that those changes need to happen. I realize the funding comes from the state, the federal government, and our county, but the school board directs what happens with that funding, so I want to thank you for the opportunity that you've given us at the county conversations, and I'd look forward to more opportunities like that, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sokolovich?
Good evening, everybody, happy new year to the entire board. I'm Jack Sokolovitz, I live on High Rockville Road down in Pilot, Virginia. I am a member of the New River Valley Tea Party, and we are concerned about the taxation of all the citizens in this county. You are about to begin the budget process for this year, and you will have groups of people, all of your subordinate departments come forward with their line requests of all the items that they were going to request funds for, for this year. I know that as a standard procedure, when you have members of the public come up to the podium or lectern, that you listen quietly and take notes, but there is no interplay. I'm hoping that as budgetary requests come forward, that you will at least challenge the requests and ask specific questions of all these people, so that the public can understand where money is supposed to go as they request it, and perhaps you can bounce ideas with all these different presenters as they come up to help minimize the dollars that are going to be expended to their respective agencies as they come up. Also, the biggest bulk of our budget is the school board. There are seven members of the school board, just like there are seven members here, who are elected by members of our society, the taxpayers. Ms. Blackburn is not one of them, she is the superintendent. I would hope that maybe the budgetary requests come from the chairman or the vice chairman of the school board, so that you can challenge those folks, the dollars, the dollars that they're requesting. It was interesting when the gentleman before talked about the budgets that were presented. No mention was, came forth about the school board not having a capital budget as opposed to an operating budget. And I don't know what the state standards are, that wasn't addressed. I don't know if it's in the information that he provided you, hopefully that'll be online for all the citizens to look at. I'd like to see that the school board, and we went through this last year, Mr. Meadows, I was hoping that the school board would have set an operating budget and a capital budget prior to them making their budgetary requests for this year. Hopefully, that will be done. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak to this public hearing? Please step forward and your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Thank you, March of Akka, eight seventeen Montgomery Street. Wanted to also talk about the budget, especially as it relates to the schools. Wanted to thank you guys. I've been involved the last couple of years with both the board supervisors and also attending the school board meetings and seeing these processes up close, and it's, I don't envy you or them for, for what we're having to go through. I mean, I think, I think what we're really going through is a structural problem at the state level. Not only have they cut funding to, to the school budget, but they've cut funding to you guys on other things, and I've heard recently about some of this transportation change and things like that, things like that, so I think we're up against a structural problem here. I think that you guys have done a great job addressing things on the school side from a capital needs point of view, and one-time cost, but as I look at the budget numbers, the operational, the yearly operational numbers continue to come down as we're educating more students, and the school board continues to make more and more cuts, and I think anybody who's attended the school board meetings, and I'm sure I've seen some of you there, can understand the difficulty of the situation that the school board is facing, and, and the deep cuts that they've already made. And we really are down to cutting staff. I mean, last year, they cut twenty-two full-time positions, and this year, I think the current budget, if they don't get some of the money, is going to be another thirty full-time positions, and increasing student-teacher ratios and things like that, so I would like to speak in support of funding of the school system and to keep these draconian cuts from, from happening. I do appreciate the need for balanced approach to things, I know that you guys wrestled with that last year, as far as what to raise the amount of, the tax rate to change. I know that as we move forward, that there's going to need to be revenue that comes from economic growth and development, and I know that there's going to be a need to lobby the state and hopefully make citizens aware of their needs to change their voting habits if things don't change at the state level. But I do hope, and I think, and I hope that... But I do hope and I think and I hope that you guys realize that there's going to also be a need for us to make some changes financially, increase the budgets to the schools as we grow. I mean, the operational budgets are shrinking now for four or five years in a row. I mean, they're operating, inflation-adjusted, operating about twelve million dollars, less than what they were in two thousand and eight. That's just four or five years ago. So I don't think that's sustainable or acceptable. A few weeks back, I think Chairman Polis had an idea about increasing tax rates gradually and earmarking some of the money for capital expenditures that we expect to have in the future so that we don't see another huge increase, and I think that's a good idea. I'd like to maybe even extend that to say, even beyond capital expenses, that we should look at doing something like that for the operational expenses that we're going to be seeing increase as the state continues to decrease them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to speak to this public hearing?
Good evening. My name is Susan Marmagas. I live at three oh five Rocker Road in Blacksburg. It's a pleasure to come before you this evening. I just want to start off by saying that our schools are excellent. We keep getting stories in the paper about how we're one of the best places in the country to live and how people want to move here, and so I think that's something that, you know, we should talk about at every meeting we go to because we have something here that's special, and I don't want us to compromise that by beginning to chip away at our great educational system because people come here for that. And I also want to honor the fact that you all have seen significant state cuts over the years and over the years, and those continue to come, and that does mean that we have to dig deeper locally and figure out how we support all kinds of things at the local level, including our schools. I have been going to these school board meetings for almost the last year, over and over again, including an event at Christiansburg High School where people got up and spoke for hours about cuts to all numbers of things. We're at a point now in our school budget that we're going to cut even more significant things than we did last year, and I just want to stand here and say, as a public citizen, I want you to support public education in this county. I want you to find additional ways to support this school budget. I've sat through those meetings. They don't make those cuts lightly, and I, as I know, as a parent who stood up there and asked for them not to close schools, let's hope we don't have to close schools again this year. I think that the decisions rest in your hands. You have the ability to help us find those resources this year, but also into future years, and so I stand before you to say, please support public education, continue to support the excellence in our county. We, as parents, stand with you in whatever you need to do to make that happen. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to address the board of this public hearing? Sing no one, and we will close this public hearing. The next public hearing is a proposed revenue recovery program by the town of Christiansburg. I'll turn that over to Mr. Meadows.
Mr. Chairman, this is, as you're aware, we've had several discussions about the revenue recovery program that the town of Christiansburg is looking to implement. We have a proposed resolution that is under Tab F in your agenda this evening. This is a draft resolution. We're not asking that any action be taken on this resolution this evening, but it is an opportunity for citizens who may have comment on the revenue recovery program in the town to speak, and also if there's any questions of board members. I see Captain Joe Cole and Adam Carpenetti from the town, who will be glad to answer any questions you may have on this item as well.
Okay. Questions?
Not so much on the draft, and I had spoken with Joe, and I think we looked a little bit back in September, and one of the things I am very anxious before I'm going to be looking to vote is seeing what the members are wanting in Christiansburg. And I understand that, you know, Blacksburg met, and they decided this is not something they wanted to do, and Reiner as well, but for me, you've got a lot of people donating at least thirty hours a month, a lot of them, a lot more. And before we're going to start the soft building, I guess I want to hear from them, and whether it be at a formal meeting at the Christiansburg Rescue Squad with the members, but I would like to see, for me personally, as far as my vote is concerned, some kind of input from those, the volunteers, and I do have, you know, I understand that we've got good leadership at Christiansburg Rescue Squad, but I want to hear from the folks that are doing the grunt work, the everyday getting, going out, this calls at two and three o'clock in the morning, and the people that are giving up those kind of sacrifices.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments? Mr. Brown?
Well, a question in the draft ordinance, and it says whereas the town of Christiansburg owns, operates, and maintains such EMS vehicles at a considerable cost to the town and provides ambulance service through the Christiansburg Rescue Squad, which is a department of the town. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe one cent of the capital that the county provides to all the rescue squads and fire departments come from the county, and I'm sure that some of those ambulances are probably resided to Montgomery County and not owned by the town of Christiansburg. I think it's a mixture.
I believe that's correct. Is that correct?
Is that correct? And, I mean, to me, the funds, I guess, if you operate this thing right, you'd say, well, if you take a county ambulance and a town ambulance, so to speak, I'm thinking about the revenue recovery. I mean, it's a county ambulance that the taxpayers of the county's paid for, and also the town of Christiansburg treats you guys really nice, too. The funding that's received from those calls, I mean, whether the county would be entitled to a small portion of it, you know, because some of the ambulances are county-owned versus town-owned, I don't know whether y'all even thought about that or not.
Any members have?
It's something that certainly has come up in the past. I know a lot of other jurisdictions are battling the same thing, that, you know, only being able to charge for calls that are on that agency.
Sorry, excuse me. Did you speak into the mic?
Yeah.
Only being able to charge for calls that are ran on an agency's own ambulance. So I know a couple of, I'm trying to think, I think it's Rockingham County, is working out an agreement where if the town is running a call on an ambulance, that they could still bill for it through, whether it's a dollar lease, or they're also on the same title to the vehicles and working out those sorts of relationships to address it. So it's not something that we have specifically tackled. We know it's out there, but that is one of the details that, as we start to proceed forward, that will, I guess, need to finalize.
Don't run away. I've got one other quick question. I've seen some information to where the recovery fee, or whatever it is, has no impact on health insurance, and then I've seen some information that it would have impact on health insurance, and I don't know which one is correct. I mean, just like, whether if we implement our anthem costs or whatever insurance cover we have, it's going to go up for the county residents or not, you know?
The information that I've seen hasn't shown that. I think, maybe, I mentioned last time, you know, our insurance premiums are going up regardless. I know with the current town, or the insurance that the town provides to its employees, that is actually currently factored into our premiums. So that is a benefit that's already factored in. So I'm not sure if the insurance companies now that are potting that, even though that's technically a benefit that is on books, would just say, oh, well, we're going to need to increase your premiums because of that. We haven't found that to be the case anywhere else, but I think that's very difficult if, you know, premiums are going up for a lot of other reasons.
Yeah, a couple of little things. If it's a call that you run to a home or residence, then I can understand where that is, health insurance, but when you have a car accident, who gets billed then?
It always gets billed back to the patient, and that is one thing that sometimes when the insurance companies are trying to figure out maybe who's at fault, they can also bill the auto company, or sorry, the auto insurance for that, but it always comes back to the patient.
So it's going to be billed to the patient whether, no matter whether it's in-house or it was automobile?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have from that, but I have something else to say in general. I'm kind of of the same inclination that Chris is. I'd like to hear from some firehouse people who are there and live it. I went to a dinner this past week at the Shawville Rescue Squad, and maybe they said they run a little over three thousand calls last year out of volunteers. So, you know, it's, seems that that is working, and I have always been taught, if something's not broke, don't go and fix it because you're probably going to get into something that you wished you hadn't have gotten that day. That's just kind of my thought, huh? I just, I'm there.
How hard would it be at the next meeting? As Joe said in September, he indicated that about ninety-five percent of the members were in favor of it. It seems like that that would be a pretty easy thing to do, is put it on, I guess, next month's agenda for the rescue squad and make a vote on it?
I would defer that to Joe.
Yeah, at September meeting, you'd ask about the recovery, and that was, I guess, because there was no plebeisite, there was no referendum for this decision. Proceeding me, this really proceeded me, and it was an initiative that came out of Division twenty twenty of the town council and the town council goal, so it was my task to implement it. This wasn't something that I took a vote on directly, and I did not do that, and I think I alluded to that at the December meeting, that did not take a vote. However, what I've done is had discussions with the members on revenue recovery and its benefits. I've been doing it since I started back in September of two thousand and eleven, and then listening to the feedback, and have not gotten, with some exceptions, any pushback on revenue recovery. They understand this is the right course of action, it is the right thing to do. Following the last meeting, when I was informed that everybody was going to quit if we did this, I went back and there actually was a meeting going on. Thirty of our most active members were there, and I pulled the room. I said, how many of you are going to quit if we do revenue recovery? None. None were going to quit. I brought it up again last Monday night at our monthly crew meeting. Again, there was nobody saying, we're going to quit if you do this. They know this is what we want to put in place to have a funding stream in the future. I'm certainly willing to do an advisory plebeisite and get their opinion on it, but this is something that the leadership of the town has said is the direction we need to go to guarantee a funding stream. One of the things that concerns me about interactions with volunteers, I've been a volunteer for twenty-six years in EMS. I still volunteer in another county and love doing it. There's this misperception that a volunteer will quit volunteering just because something gets done that they don't like, and I'm always a little disappointed with that perception because that paints them as pretty shallow, and I think volunteers, especially EMS fire volunteers, do it because they love doing it. They love taking care of their communities and their neighbors. They're not going to quit because they get upset with a single decision, and in this case, I don't sense a lot of upset with this course of action. I think it's pretty understood. They like spending the money on the things we need. It's the way we're going to guarantee that funding stream.
Well, the reason I asked in September, and you gave that ninety-five percent, and because I asked how are the members supporting that?
Right.
And so when you said ninety-five percent, I'm thinking, okay, they're really behind this. And then in December, you said you really hadn't taken a vote on it.
No vote.
And so it's, and I guess, I'm not saying that these members are shallow, but I'm saying that we've got, when we're looking at all the other rescue squads and they're saying, we don't want to do this.
Correct.
That gets my attention, especially when we have people who are saving, one, saving lives, but saving the taxpayers of Montgomery County to the tune of millions of dollars every single year. And so I guess, from my perspective, I want to know what those people who are giving up that kind of time and making that kind of commitment think about this before I, as Chris Tuck, who has got experience as an attorney, but I've done one ride-along, so that doesn't give me a lot of experience. And so I want to hear from the folks that are doing the work. At least, that's my perspective of things.
And I sincerely apologize. I did not mean to imply that you thought they were shallow. I did not mean that.
Well, I just heard something, and maybe it went over my head before, but I guess I never gathered before that this came from the town council and their vision. I was thinking, when you came here, somehow it just came from the department.
Yeah.
So I have a question.
Sure.
In regards to that. Did this ever come up in any of the town, county liaison meetings that you guys had? That this is something that the town of Christiansburg, the council members wanted? Did I miss something?
It came up several, several times in towns, county liaison meetings, you know. It, from my understanding, it came, it started at the town council at Christiansburg, is where it started at, and it was pushed down to the rescue squad. I guess when it comes from your county officials...
Well, did we miss something, though? Or did, maybe it was just me, because I know I did have some germin anesthesia back then, but did we, as the board of supervisors, not understand it came from the town council? I thought it came from them.
No, no, no. Originally, originally, let me go back, four or five, three or four years, I think we, as the county, looked at it as a possible revenue source. We had our EMS coordinator to conduct some studies, do some research, and so forth, probably for, I guess, a couple, three years, and Christiansburg really got into it, and I think we were partying to some of their study groups, if I'm not mistaken, and probably the people from Blacksburg, too. They'd had a group to discuss, I guess, pros, cons, implementation, et cetera, et cetera, exactly what they talked about. And then it was kicked around, I think, in the beginning, when it first come out to town council, that it come to the Fire and Rescue Commission, and it came like this, we're going to implement this tomorrow, and the commission backed up and said, no, 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 we're not going to participate anything unless a formal study has been conducted by whatever parties that it is. Matter of fact, the commission passed a resolution in Senate back that nobody, and that was to slow down the implementation of this thing. I think a couple of the council people there, they really wanted this thing to really take off like fire, and then the members of the commission sort of backed up and said, no, 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 we don't want to participate. So as things went along, studies were conducted, and I think they had a committee in the town of Christiansburg, I think it was made up of the fire chief, the rescue chief, and several other people, maybe a couple of people in the county and the towns and so forth. And then it sort of, I guess, emerged, really got to a halt when Chief Cole came, you know, he brought some experience from Roanoke County and so forth. I guess at that particular point, it was discussed at the Fire...
Rescue Commission.
Yeah, commission, and the thoughts and pros and cons and so forth, and it was a consensus of, Blacksburg, point example, they didn't want to do it because they took pride in volunteering and so forth, and then I think it was a couple of other people and so forth. But these were the ones that sort of backed up from it, and Christiansburg proceeded on with the implementation of it, and that's how we sort of got here through several meetings with council and several studies and so forth. And so I guess, I asked quite a few questions and so forth. How are you going to implement it? Will you use, I guess, a town conversation things, and because I know you all had probably a couple of them.
Yes, sir.
Where you advertised and so forth. Zero people showed up, you know, to those and so forth, so I think it's bits and pieces, but that's how we got to where it got to. It wasn't initiated within that rescue squad. It was initiated above them, pushed down.
Then it came there, and then it went. I just wonder why we never had a direct link to the people that...
I think...
Elected officials at the town levels. There's something missing there.
I don't want to speak for Mary.
I think maybe what Mary, you're getting at, Ms. Biggs is getting at is that the way that, that we, the rest of us and the board have been presented with us is.
Yeah.
Is by this presentation. And so we were, I think, a little bit unaware that this was initiated.
No, it comes from the Christiansburg Town Council.
So perhaps it's just a matter of communication within the board that.
Yeah.
Needed maybe in the next instance, better communication, you know, from these Town Council liaisons to us. And that way, you know, we're a little bit better prepared. So I, is that kind of.
Yeah, I mean, if it's something that our colleagues that are elected wanted within our county, they're the town, I mean, I don't understand why we didn't hear about it from them instead of this way up.
Because my interpretation, and you guys are standing there, my interpretation of it is they basically charged you guys with moving it forward.
That's right. Yes, sir. Just the survey.
Who was that?
The, the Town Council.
The Town Council of Christiansburg?
Yeah, why didn't we have a discussion with them? I mean, I don't get it.
It would be my thinking that any significant change in anything we do as government should come back to this board and report it on, whether it's three people there or whether it's eight or nine people there. We, I don't think anybody has the right, number one, to go negotiate for the rest of the people on this board on anything that they did.
Totally agree with that.
So therefore, it needs to come back to this group before any action can ever be taken. And it hasn't, that didn't happen.
Right.
Let me say this, nobody negotiated anything on this board. We were, as a commission member, the information was put out to us. We didn't have a vote or nothing to say. It came to us because of this ordinance and what the law say as right chair. It never would even got this far if they didn't need the approval of this law to implement it, this little local ordinance right here. They, the Christian of Christiansburg and its employees and things, took it upon themselves to go on with this, and they didn't really need, know that they needed any approval from this, from this board.
Right.
I mean, whether we opposed it or supported it, it wasn't up to, to us the way it was presented to us.
I, I do have a follow-up and, and changing the subject a little bit, and that's to the revenue. My understanding is conservative, projections 600,000 per year and, and high end, maybe 800,000 per year?
Eight, nine.
All right. Now, let's say that the Town of Christiansburg, because the Town of Christiansburg will get the check, here's the 800,000, or this, split the difference and say 700,000. What, if anything, resolution says the Town of Christiansburg passed to say that $700,000 will go back into the rescue squads, if anything?
That is currently, we're leaving that with our Town Council. We're not speaking on their behalf.
All right, I understand. But have they passed anything to say, okay, end of the year, we got $700,000 from this revenue source, which is basically the revenue source is volunteers going out and responding to calls for the most part. I know there are some paid staff, or will be some potential paid staff to, to fill in during some daytime hours potentially. But what assurances, I guess, or, or is there anything that's out there that's saying that $700,000 will not be, ended up being used for road improvements or for, you know, upgrades to Main Street or something along those lines? Is there anything out there, any resolutions passed at all that you're aware of?
There is nothing formal at this time. I can say there have been some general discussions about what it should be used for, but no, there is nothing final in the books.
Ms. Perkins?
Well, I think that's a very significant point. That the third pair, Juarez here says, the, the town desires to bill customers and/or their insurers for the use of the EMS vehicles and ambulance services in order to defray the cost of providing the same. So they're saying that what they're going to do is to defray the cost of providing those services and for the use of those vehicles. But it doesn't say all of it's going to go back, and it doesn't say that every bit of it's going to be used. It only says to defray the cost. And defray usually means the total cost, but that's not necessarily how you can interpret that. It's the way I look at it. So we don't have any assurances from anything that's in this draft that says it will all go back to the rescue squads.
If that's something that you all are seeking, I can certainly take that back to, to my council and, and inform them of that.
Right, I think I would feel a lot more comfortable, especially since we, we are talking about, these are volunteers and we're generating that kind of income. For me personally, and I, again, I, I'm sorry if I made it sound like I was speaking on the board. I'm, I'm speaking for myself. For me personally, I, I would like to see that.
And one, another thing that I, just to listen to this, when you talk about six to 800,000 dollars, does that mean that this board has to furnish less money to that rescue squad? Or can they, would they be allowed to go and place more money to the other three entities that we have in the county that are service providers? Because the other one would already be getting some. I, you know, those are things that I'd like to know, that I have to start.
Well, I, you know, Bill is much more of an expert on the cost of ambulances and the like and, and, but my understanding is that the costs of providing these things are continuing to go up, and that's what the hope is. And in, Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, there have been some times, because a lot of the Christiansburg volunteers are nine to five workers. So there's a, a little bit, there's a gap sometimes during the daytime. And that's dramatically improved over the last year. But there was a gap in Blacksburg, which doesn't have as many, they have more students, and they were, ended up helping Christiansburg out a little bit with those calls. And my understanding was there's a potential of hiring some full-time help during those.
Flex time.
Or for flex time, to, to be able to try to, to make sure that the coverage and the citizens were, were receiving, you know, what they needed to as far as rescue.
And all of those are just things that I'd like to, to know.
Another comment. Thinking back to, I remember when, when it was, this resolution was passed by the commission. I specifically instructed our secretary or our EMS to make sure that it was distributed to the, the Town, for the Town Council members and also the Board of Supervisors. You remember when I said, I want a, a copy of that letter attached to the minutes? So when it was distributed, we would all be informed of what action the commission had taken. Because I want you guys to, to get the minutes and know, you know, what's going on with the boards and commissions. And I think that's how that resolution got directly back to some of your council members that were really pushing this.
Anybody else?
Well, how then are we going to get all this information? Right? How's that going to happen?
I think that we need to.
No idea what's going to happen.
I think that we need to know what specific questions or information that you need. And then, I mean, if it's, if the questions can come, we'll make sure that they can get the questions and get the answers back to us, if you wanted to go that way. You know, I have a way that you guys want to get the answers to your questions. If you have questions, I think probably if we all was to email them to the county administrator, the questions that we have, and he probably could, could make sure that the town manager somewhere in Christiansburg would, would get them.
And we can go through the minutes to the notes that, that we've made tonight and, and try to get as many of those as we can addressed. Some of the questions, for example, the one Supervisor Creed brought up about the funding, that's a discussion this board will have to take up at some point. I mean, that's, that's this board's decision. That's not something staff will ever try to decide.
Right.
And I do want to reiterate, reiterate that, you know, when this process all started, it was a working committee of, of the Town of Blacksburg, the Town of Christiansburg, and the county. Blacksburg made it clear fairly early on that they were not interested in moving forward. And then you reported back to your council, and your council said they wanted to see it happen. That's, that's been my understanding, and that's what started this entire process. So there's not been any negotiations anywhere other than.
I think the point was more that it came from Town Council of Christiansburg, elected body.
Through the staff.
Yeah, pushed, pushed out to their people.
Right. I guess my point was, when it's something that is this significant, I wondered why at this level, we weren't having some kind of interchange with the Town of Christiansburg and the Board of Supervisors? I don't understand. Like, that's a pretty important.
That's what all these meetings are for.
Right, but the way, or maybe it's just me, you all step in. I, I was thinking it came from y'all's department. See, I was thinking it came from you. I had no idea this was a top down.
The, the first time I heard about it from the Town of Christiansburg was in their 2020 Vision Report. Okay. And everybody should have gotten that.
Yeah.
I initially started pushing this several years ago.
Yeah.
As a revenue source.
Countywide.
Countywide, okay. We ran into resistance, Christiansburg Town, put it in their vision statement, and, you know, that's where it's been at from that point. Now, we do supply Christiansburg, what was it, 80,000 a year in operating costs? And a little less for Blacksburg, and we do 93, plus the 1%, plus the penny.
Yeah, plus the penny.
Plus what?
Yeah, right.
Plus what?
And that's distributed by the, that's distributed by the Fire and Rescue Commission, that county is. So, you know, like Phil said and Craig said, that's really where it started from.
I have another question. I haven't got a chance here.
Go ahead.
You know, we've mentioned the Town of Christiansburg and the Town of Blacksburg pretty exclusively. What about your Shawville Rescue Squad?
Our launch about Wayne Ryan or?
Do you want to address that? This is going through the Fire Rescue Commission.
Well, when, of course, Ronins just recently, I think they, two years up and running, they were arm of, of Christiansburg. At the particular point, I think when Christiansburg decided to go with it, I, I believe that Long Shawville, we wouldn't really, hadn't really decided at that time. But I think they're about 50/50 either way. Some oppose, some, some don't. I've talked to the rescue chief her several times, and, and he says, well, the volunteers, they don't believe that the county should make money off of their, their volunteer and their time. And it's, it's, I guess it's misinformation. The county, even if the county wants totally fee recovery, the county didn't make any money and go right back to the rescue squads. It's just sort of filters to, Blacksburg was opposed. I, I don't know where, exactly where Shawville are, and I think Ron is somewhere, they could go either way. I think that they're going real well with their community support and, and volunteers and so forth, so.
We, we had a meeting with Ryan or what, six months ago?
Probably longer than that.
Maybe longer than that. We had a meeting with Ryan, and at that point in time, they were not.
Those were way.
Great than myself and Bill. Just because it came up, and you were there, you were there.
No, I was upset that.
You didn't go to that meeting? Okay.
Well, that was a meeting that was called by the.
By the chief.
By the chief. He asked us to attend.
And that meeting, that meeting was related to this, this issue?
Pardon?
That meeting was related to this?
It was related to fee for service.
It was related to fee for service for the county, not for the town.
Not for the county. Is the county pursuing this?
Pardon?
Is the county pursuing this?
No, we're not.
No? Okay, then why was there a meeting about the county pursuing this?
Because I have been pursuing it for about six years, myself. And I brought it to this board.
Not while I've been on the board.
Not, not last year we haven't. Because in the last year, I kind of dropped it because nobody seemed to want to do it. But I've talked to this board about it in the past.
Yes, you have.
Not this past year?
Not the past year.
No.
It was generally was probably, I'm thinking, we were sitting around to, discussing ways to try to raise revenue. I mean, it's even like stickers for vehicles, for green boxes and charging this and charging that. And you said that there's about 900 or a million dollars worth of recovery fee that the rescue squads could.
Throughout the county.
Throughout the county. And this may have been three or four years ago. Yeah, I'm thinking about four years ago.
Yeah.
That he mentioned it. And then as we talked a year or two afterwards, and Jim was a pretty hard driver, so we had Neil to do a little research of some potential recovery amount, estimate or something, and how other people are operating and so forth. I think it's, and then it's sort of.
Three or four years ago?
Over the past couple of years, it sort of, just sort of died out. But when Christiansburg got into it, I, I believe we wanted to be a party to the information so they could bring the information back to the county, Town of Blacksburg and Christiansburg and so forth. And you guys fought meeting, what, a year, a year and a half ago or something?
We've had that committee, the, the committee of the staff people for, what, at least a year and a half?
Yeah.
Carol, at least that long.
But, you know, the only thing that I, I would like to know is how are the, are these people who have been volunteering for a long period of time supposed to feel when we weren't close enough to what was going on to ask them their opinion?
I think some of the opinion was brought to us by the chiefs.
From Shawville?
Bill, Bill's on there, Shawville and Ryan, because I was invited, asked to come.
I don't want to speak incorrectly, but I can't exactly remember how, I think it was Captain Agers was, is the rescue chief right now. What their exact response was, whether it was okay, we support it or not support it, I don't, you know, because it's been some, some time back.
Yeah, because he's not even there anymore.
John, well, no, they just swing in, Captain Agers, is chief now down at Shawville. He's, he's been there. He's been there, I guess he's been there as long as I've been on the board.
I'm hearing somebody else.
Yeah, yeah.
He's been chief for.
Well, and it died, yeah.
Since Channing, throughout.
The only place I've been invited was to Ryan.
Yeah, and I just, I just know that I was never involved with asking any of the people for whom I represent.
Right.
And if something was going on to what involved them, I would think that I should have been involved enough to have said, hey, maybe you need to go down and talk with them?
Or you.
Because, you know, sometimes, you know, we can get out in the lead too far and you ain't going to make nothing but a butt out of yourself.
Oh, Mary's got, Mary's got the cover for that.
Yeah, yeah, sometimes. And, and sometimes it, it, it might be a little bit me. I, I just don't see me as, as the representative of this board going and maybe the Town of Blacksburg telling them how to run their rescue squad. And, and with, I mean, all five rescue squads have different cultures. Ain't none of them, all of them are great. All of them are great volunteers. I don't see going in and telling the, the, the rescue chief over there, well, you need to do A, B, C, and D, or you need to come, you need to come to the board and get approval before you do this, because they probably look at you in life. I don't believe in going into the Town of Christiansburg Rescue Squad, telling them how to manage their squad, you know.
No, but you would ask them what their opinion was.
Yeah.
And that's the point we left at.
Well, and the only thing I'll add to the conversation is I do think, I think we get, I think we've, we've got conversation and direction, or discussion and direction. There's been a lot of discussion on fee for service ever since I've been here. The, the, the board chairs brought it up. I know we've had discussions in other meetings about fee for service. There was a committee formed at one point. There was a committee formed at one point to look countywide at fee for service. It was at the staff level. And through that committee is when it was determined that really there was no push to implement fee for service, except from the Town of Christiansburg. And that came from a couple of your council members to your staff. And then that's kind of how we got off on this track of, okay, well, the town's moving forward with it. Uh, but again, the assumption was from that committee, uh, you know, that was moving along for a long time. There was an assumption made that the town didn't even have to have the county's approval.
That's right.
And it was an attorney that kind of slowed the things down at the eleventh hour and said, guys, you know, the ordinance says the county has to be involved with this too. That's how it got back to this point. Uh, but, you know, and I'll say that again, you know, we don't ever-
And this has just been in the last few weeks, two months?
It's been since before Christmas, but-
Yeah, last couple of months.
But, you know, not trying to defend anything that's been said, but we would never set a direction without a discussion with this board. And I do feel from at least the standpoint that I recall of the time, you could, I mean, what's this, the third time y'all have been here?
Yes, sir.
I mean, there's been discussion when it reached a level that there had to be some direction from the county on how to proceed.
As far as Christiansburg concerned?
Right, and there is no proceeding anywhere else in the county. That's, there, that's a moot point at this point. There's nothing else going on with that.
I was just struck by Chair Plata saying that he had a meeting six months ago with Ryan to discuss fee for service in the county. Because that's something very different than what we're discussing here.
And Bill corrected me and said it was several, a couple of years ago and it was just something that I was-
If it was several years, then that's, that's fine.
I think what, uh, was not pushing it, but letting the, the county squads be informed about it, so to speak, more than anything else. Uh, because sitting around, and, and I'm one of the old schools and I'm really one that is very reluctant to change. I mean, you have to really sort of convince me. And, uh, even when, when, uh, this, uh, fee recovery program came up, I was like, man. I mean, personally, I said, well, this sucks. You know, we got volunteers providing this, that, and that. But, uh, once, I mean, you hear bits and pieces and Chief Coroll came to the commission one night and really, I mean, I guess probably about, about an hour, hour and fifteen minutes, made this presentation, similar to the same presentation that we seen. And you could hear a pin dropping in room and, and, uh, I was saying, wow. You know, I'd like to see him come before this board and just make the, the information type thing. Not that, uh, we're trying to sell it to you or anything, but so you'd be informed. But, uh, it's whatever. But I think if you, you'll find out, I think that if you look back over some of your, your minutes, if they was distributed correctly when, uh, the commission passed that resolution, that they should have been attached to your minutes that was distributed, uh, distributed to you. Cause we want to make sure all the board members got it and especially all the Town Council members of Christiansburg got it. Because, uh, I think, and, and I'll say this lightly, I think during that process, they were, they were making Adams like pretty rough cause they wanted him to like implement it in a week's, overnight. And it wasn't, wasn't gonna happen with the, with the commission's support or anything.
Any other? I just have one question, or just actually a point of clarification. I think I know the answer to this, but I just want to be sure. Is that the draft resolution that we have in our packet, who, who wrote that?
Christian.
Town of Christiansburg did, and has that gone through?
That, that's just something they proposed.
That's just something-
We haven't commented back on it.
Okay, all right, so we would obviously deal with it before. Okay, thank you.
When, I mean, they came in in the fall and said they were gonna do this. And then this board and we started raising questions about authority. Could they implement that in the, in the county and the town? And, and so we looked at the code and looked at the enabling legislation that allows counties and towns to do fee for service. And the age, the question was raised, it appears the county needs to authorize the town to do that. That was relayed back to their staff and then, uh, some time went by, I don't know, not much time, but, and then their attorney sent a motion saying, we would like the county to consider this. And that's what's, that's basically how I remember that.
Okay.
So on the, um, finances, like if this goes through and the town, I would assume that then the Town Council would set it up. They would have to vote on how they were gonna incorporate this into their budget. And I guess, um, going back to Ms. Perkins and was it Matt or Chris that raised about the budget? Anyway, like is it gonna go into a, a general fund or is it gonna be specifically marked for the fire and rescue? Would that's something that sound like we definitely wanted to know? Like is it gonna have a separate accounting process so we know that the money goes there? Or, I mean, they don't have to do it, they can do whatever they want. You can spend it on roads or whatever. But, um, you know, it sounds like we wanted that question answered because we provide part of the funding. I heard that.
And I wanted the question answered and I, I think we, they said they didn't know, um, whether or not it really affects people's insurance.
Insurance, medical insurance.
Medicare, we know will pay for it and probably doesn't affect elderly citizens. But what about those who are under the age of sixty-five, who do not have Medicare, but who have insurance? And whether or not a, a constant, you know, there are some people with chronic diseases that go very frequently. But whether or not this really affects the premiums and the cost? It seems to me it has to. I mean, it, you know, but I don't know.
Let me suggest this. We will, over the next day or so, go through the notes from tonight and compile a list of questions based on what we've heard tonight. We'll send that out to everybody, let you look at it and see if there's anything we're missing or if we misinterpreted what you were asking. And then once we get that clarified, we'll get it to y'all.
Sounds like a good idea.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now.
Thank you guys for being here.
Thank you.
Uh, is there anybody who in, in the audience?
Oh, yeah.
Who would like to speak to this public hearing?
Thank you.
There is nobody signed up, but if you wish to speak, speak to this public hearing, please come forward, say your name and address and you have five minutes. Seeing no one, we'll close this public hearing.
I guess after that discussion, Jim-
I'll be free.
You never know.
All right. Let me back up here a little bit. Uh, the next item on the agenda is public address. And there is nobody signed up for this public address, but if there's anybody in the audience who would like to speak, please state your name and address and you'll have five minutes. Seeing no one, we'll close our public address. Uh, there are no addendums.
Not sure.
The next item is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion, please?
Sumed.
Same.
Then move and seconded. Any, uh, discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Fitz?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Chair Willis?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, the next item is new business. And the Board of Supervisors' annual appointments to boards and commissions for 2013. And the first, uh, one is the Board of Supervisors' annual appointments for the AFD Advisory Committee.
Could we keep what we did last year?
Yes, ma'am. Good idea. I looked at it ahead last year.
Could we just stay, keep what we got unless we want to change?
Can we just say, keep what we got unless we want to?
Yeah, you just say the same, same.
All right, is there anybody who wants to change any appointments, give up? Anybody comfortable?
Well, that's over time.
Where I am, I mean, I'd, I'd like to explore some other, um, areas, perhaps maybe the following year, but I think for next year it'd be fine with me.
Okay.
I'm happy with planning commission, man.
All right. Any further discussion? And we'll combine this into one. I guess there's one anyway in it. Okay.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion's over?
I need a motion and a second.
I have, I need a second?
I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Motion second.
I thought I was second, but that's fine.
I thought I brought it up too. Roll call, please.
Ms. Fitz?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Chair Willis?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right, the next item is, uh, now is this Workforce Investment Board handled separately or not?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, it is separate, yeah.
Okay. Appointment to the Riverside Mount Rogers Workforce Investment Consortium. And, uh, do I have a motion, please, as for Mr. Brown?
So moved.
Second.
And move and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Fitz?
Aye.
Chair Willis?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
And the next item is to go into work session. Uh, does anybody need to take a quick break before we do that?
Could we please? Thank you.
Let's take a quick break. And, uh, the next item on the agenda, and I don't think we loaded on it yet, is to go into work session. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Fitz?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Chair Willis?
Aye.
Seven ayes. Going into work session.
Work session. Okay, the first item on the work session is FY14 revenue estimates. And Mr. McGluder-
Wow, what's with a lot of good news?
I do have some good news, man.
Okay, good.
Yay.
So I'm gonna talk to you a little bit, uh, about, uh, revenue structure. Wanted to start off by, uh, just give you some background information and talk a little bit about the different categories. And really the biggest category that we talk about all the time is real estate. It's the single largest category of county revenue and right now it's approximately fifty-nine million dollars. And nearly three quarters of all property taxes come from real estate. And to try and put that into perspective, if you look at the total county revenue structure, fifty-three percent of all revenue comes from real estate. So in order for us to generate a million dollars in real estate tax revenue growth, um, the assessed valuation each year would have to increase by about a hundred and fifty million dollars. And in the past, the county did receive revenues in that range. Uh, but due to, uh, the current economic conditions and the slow housing starts and, um, the capital investment that we've been seeing, um, that growth in real estate valuation is estimated to be only about fifty million. So I wanted to give you a little historical growth pattern. Um, the peak of our real estate revenue collection was in, um, two thousand and eight, where we had assessed valuations, um, increased due to new construction of a hundred and seventy-six million. And so you can see since two thousand and eight, we've had a steady decline, um, in that valuation. And then if you look at two thousand and eleven, that was a reassessment year. And so if you take the, the reassessed values out of the equation and you look at just what was new construction value, we actually had fifty-four million dollars in that year. And we caught and bottomed out in two thousand and twelve. Um, so we went from a hundred and seventy-six all the way down to twenty-seven million dollars in, in two thousand and twelve. Two thousand and thirteen, which is an estimate, but we do have building permit data to support that at this point. Looks like we're gonna come in at about forty-six million dollars. And the projection for fourteen is about fifty million. And again, the building permit data that we've collected, um, reflects that, those increases. The increase in assessed value to new growth, again, is fifty million. However, we're not gonna really see the full benefit of that fifty million dollars. And the reason for that, and I'll, I'll speak about it here in a second. If we take, um, the calculation of revenue from the fifty million dollars, um, if we were able to collect a hundred percent of that value, it would be four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. But when we adjust for our collection rate, which, um, is around ninety-seven percent and land book adjustments, we have to take forty-five thousand dollars off the table there. And then the big kicker on this is tax relief and land use adjustments. And that trims another two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. Of that two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, two hundred and fifty is related strictly to tax relief. And so once you pull that off, um, we're only gonna have a hundred and seven thousand dollars in new revenue off of that fifty million dollars.
Could you just clarify land use adjustment?
Um, yeah, we have a land use program, so if you're, um, if you have land that you're using for farming practices, things of that nature, um, you don't get taxed on that, um, like you would as if, you know, you just had land and you weren't using it for, for land use purposes. And so that money actually comes off of the table, um, and so you don't get the full valuation for that. So again, of that four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, um, we're only gonna pick up a hundred and seven. And the lion's share of, of the reason for that is, um, the, the, the tax, um, relief adjustments.
Excuse me, Mark, a lot of this too, I guess when you're talking about, uh, land use, would that be like the ag enforcement districts that we have watch parcels out there? Does they tax, tax a lot less than-
Ag enforcement has no-
You know, no borrowing taxes.
No, uh, tax breaks, only, uh, land use. And in order to have land use, you have to make a certain amount of revenue on your farm per year.
That's correct. And we're gonna talk about personal property, motor vehicles. This category is actually the most difficult to estimate due to the timing of when the value can be assessed and when we actually pick up the revenue associated with it. So I wanted to give an example, if you bought a new vehicle on January second of this year, the tax on that vehicle wouldn't actually be due until December fifth of two thousand and fourteen, which is in fiscal year fifteen. And so there's a lag time between when values actually come on and, um, when we actually collect the revenue on that. And that is because Montgomery County is not a proration, um, or we don't prorate our, um, personal property, motor vehicles.
You know, since we have new board members, you might wanna, you might wanna speak to us why we don't? Cause we've asked this a number of times, you know, why, why don't we do that?
Well, I, I believe the decision, uh, as far as whether or not we prorate or not, um, I'm not sure if it rests strictly with the Commissioner of Revenue or with the board, but at some point, um, the decision would have to be made to, to do that. And thus far, we have not decided to, uh, to go into proration. Um, but essentially, um, you know, if we were doing proration and somebody picked up that vehicle on January second, we would immediately tax that vehicle rather than waiting for that extended period of time before it shows up on the book.
But weren't we told that it's too much paperwork? Or am I, am I not remembering that right? Cause I remember we specific, maybe you weren't here when we specifically asked that, but we've asked that before to try to bring in more revenue and-
Yeah, I don't know, I'm not, I mean, there's been discussions-
Carol, do you remember? Because do we need to ask it again?
I'd certainly like to know whose authority we're supposed to have to make the decision.
Cause I know we've discussed it way back when.
Yeah.
We've discussed it a number of times over the years. And, and the one thing that has happened over the years is more the processes are automated now than they ever used to be. There, there's different ways of doing things. I will tell you that the current Commissioner of Revenue did come to talk to me one day about the fact that she was interested in looking at doing proration. So it is something the Commissioner is considering and has been gathering some information on. So at some point in time, you may want to have her address the board about her findings about doing it. She's very much interested in doing that. But yes, you're correct. I think, um, between needing additional staff and the additional paperwork that was done, um, we didn't see the value at that point in time. I think, um, now with some of the changes that are made and that something the Commissioner has seen that other jurisdictions who have not done it are benefiting from it is certainly something she's looking at. I don't either, I don't know either whether or not the decision rests with the Commissioner with this board. Um, my guess would be it would be with the Commissioner.
So would that be something people would be interested in if sometime down the line, if she wants to come and talk to us about it?
All right, I think so.
I, I would think that you would run it completely different. If you were wanting to do it in a correct fashion of where you get the most amount of dollars out of it at the time. And that would be set aside our yearly budget period or any other time that's not four or five months before our budget period, sometime in the fall or, or early spring. And tax on sales- And tax on sales per month per year rather than on inventory. Inventory is what they got left. Sales is what they save.
I'm talking about like, see, I'm one of those people that actually did buy a vehicle, but I won't be taxed on it until 2013 because, well, see, I bought it in 2012. So I bought it, I didn't, so see, it's gonna be a whole time that I could have been paying something that I'm not...
The same thing happens to car dealerships.
With merchants' capital, yeah.
Yeah, you're talking about, I'm talking about the tax you pay when you buy it. Yeah. I was just trying, I was trying to figure out a way to get more money, you know, on it.
But you do pay on what you had over. So lots of people, doesn't make a whole lot of difference if they trade car every year. That portion of it is not making a lot of difference.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is if the Commissioner is interested in looking at, are you all interested in hearing her presentation?
Because you pay on, you know, you pay on what you had. So if you had a car that's a year or two old, there's not much difference between...
Okay, but like if your, are people, is your consensus maybe that we could hear what she would have to say?
I have no problem with that.
Yes.
I'm always in favor of listening to somebody.
Mr. Ball, what happened here?
I'm just saying on the other, on the other, we don't, we can't have people. So it might be something that we wanna look at. Because everything gets run through the DMV. And they're already doing our taxes, our stickers. So it probably wouldn't cost a whole lot of money to get that done.
Sorry about off subject.
So when we look at this particular category of revenue, you know, growth is based on new and used car sales, the NADA evaluation, supply and demand of new and used vehicles on the market. And actually, the assessed value of personal property motor vehicles exceeded the estimate the current year, which we've incorporated into the fiscal year '14 estimate. And what we're actually seeing going on right now is, you know, people have hung on to their used vehicles. And they hung on to those during, during this recession that we were in. So we weren't seeing a lot of valuation being added to the book. But what has happened is as these vehicles have gotten older, people have realized, hey, it's time for me to buy a new vehicle. And so we're starting to see a lot more new vehicle sales going on right now. And all of the major American manufacturers are showing record sales in the current year. And so that's, that's good moving forward. So after we apply the collection rate, we're looking at about $1.2 million in growth in the next year. Again, I'll show you the history of our assessed valuation. Again, you can see what the increases were per year. In fiscal year 2011, we actually changed the valuation method from loan to trade value because we had a huge drop in the value of the book the previous year. So we changed that valuation method to sort of mitigate that gap that we had in the prior period. So for fiscal year '13, we actually collected $31 million. And we're estimating $30 million for fiscal year '14. So to give you a broad draw on what we're looking at going into '14, we're looking at $2 million in additional revenue growth. We have about $100,000 coming from real estate. Again, the reason for that is the tax relief adjustments. Personal property motor vehicles, we're looking at $1.2 million. That's based on $30 million in growth. Sales and use tax, we're looking at just under $200,000. And that's based on a 2.5% growth estimate. Other current property, which is machinery and tools, merchants' capital, and public service corporation at around $200,000. And then other categories of personal property, which the line share that's in delinquencies is around $300,000. So that gives us about $2 million in growth for the next year. Next slide shows you a chart of our undesignated revenues by individual category. And you can see where the increases are. Again, you'll see the $100,000 there in real estate, $1.2 million in personal property, and so on, down to the 2.0 million dollar increase. Back during the summer, we got a projection that we were gonna bring in about an additional $1.5 billion, I believe, than what we expected last year. Is that correct? Am I right on that number approximately? I don't know what the exact number was, but I know we exceeded our estimates last year, yes. Is that being factored in to this budget at this point in time? So where, are we saying that we're going to bring in an additional $2 million on top of that $1.5 billion approximately? I'm not going to use that number exactly approximately. So we're looking at, over what we believe last year's budget, we're looking around $3.5 billion? No, we're looking at $2 million above last year's budget. And what happened was when we, you know, we're looking at revenue estimates throughout the course of the year. And so as the information comes in, we update our estimates accordingly. So when we set the budget last year, we knew that we had that $1.5 million or whatever the number was in that current year. And so it was built into the projection going forward. Just like this number here has numbers that are built in from the year that we're in currently. Well, now, if I remember correctly, last year's budget had about $1.7 million in expected growth, if I remember the numbers right. And again, I'm not saying, so it's my understanding that we exceeded it. If I remember Carol's report that came in, and I can't remember what summer month it was, but it was about $1.5 billion. So that's kind of what I'm looking at, are we talking about those kind of projections?
I think we need to get our years straight.
Okay.
In the summer, you were doing a look back on fiscal year '12.
Okay.
You're currently in fiscal year '13, and Mark's projecting '14.
'14.
Okay?
Okay.
So the $1.5 million, what he's talking about is what we were showing is over and above the estimates for '12 that you spent currently in '13. So you already have spent that. And the $2 million is all the revenue in total that you have going into '14.
Okay. Thank you. All right, now, some good news about the Governor's budget. And you know, the past couple of years, we've had been dealing with this flexible cut and which basically was around $250,000 to upwards of $300,000, depending upon the fiscal year. And the good news is the state has eliminated that flexible cut. And that has provided us with, assuming that this goes forward, $242,000 in additional revenue that we didn't previously have. Other estimated increases in all categories excluding schools is another $116,000. So we're looking at adding $359,000 in additional revenues from the state that we previously were not receiving. And again, those are estimates. And all those dollars are subject to change based on what the General Assembly decides to do.
Because you also have to remember that part of the Governor's recommendation is to take some money out of the general fund to add to the one cent increase he proposed for transportation. And if you take that money out of the general fund, then that's gonna cut money to localities for services. So you could come right back and have to cut the same amount out. But this looks good, this looks good. Sorry, just had to say that.
Doesn't look that good.
So where are we now? So estimated, total estimated new undesignated revenues, right, $2 million. And we're gonna receive $359,000 in estimated state revenue increases, and that excludes the schools. We have $380,000 that we're going to have to pay out for economic development grants. And those are payable in fiscal year '14, subject to performance agreements through economic development. So once we take all that into consideration, we're looking at $2 million, just over $2 million that we will have available for fiscal year '14. Do we know how the Governor's budget will affect the jail costs? You know, last year, if I recall correctly, our jail cost went up about $500,000. I know he had a projection that they would be upping the amount of money that they would be giving back to individuals or individual localities as far as housing state inmates. Do we know how that's gonna affect our budget at this point in time? At this point in time, I don't have any information on that. But as we find out more information, we will certainly let you know.
And that's two key components. One is funding from the state for inmate care and whatnot. The other component that has been driving the numbers has been our own increased utilization of the regional jail. And that's, that has driven that number considerably as well. But Carol and I both are on the Finance Committee. And we've got a meeting in the next couple of weeks with the jail authority, the 30th. So we'll be hopefully having some information in the next month or so.
The other thing, of course, that we need to pay attention to too, is as Mark pointed out as a thing, is that the state revenue increase excludes the schools. And there is an increase in the state, in the Governor's budget for aid to Montgomery County in the neighborhood of, I think, $600,000 or something thousand dollars. But a good chunk of that is tied to the 2% salary raise, which will make us kick in a good chunk of change in the neighborhood of like $1.3 million above that in order for the schools to get that amount of money.
And does that only cover certain individuals in the school system?
Correct.
Only certain are covered?
We're gonna talk about that in a couple of slides. I thought we had that in there. Stay tuned, stay tuned.
So at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Carol unless y'all have any questions for me.
Thank you.
Well, I was gonna review some of the things from the Governor's budget. But it sounds like everybody's already up to speed on it. So I'll just quickly go through some of this, just building on what Supervisor Biggs had mentioned before about all the things the state's doing. The $48.1 million in sales tax directed toward transportation. Sales tax is a big amount of money in the school budget, but this is directed toward transportation. There's $50 million in an extra deposit to the rainy day fund. And you know, I love keeping a rainy day fund in reserves, but this is paying forward. It's even over and above what is required in the constitutional amendment for the rainy day fund. The $9 million is transferred, and that should be the literary fund, not literary loans. I don't know what I was thinking when I wrote it, I guess literary loans. But that money is again going from the literary fund to the general fund to offset general fund costs for teacher retirement. What I didn't know, and I was looking around today about trying to find some information about, well, how often do they take it out of the let loan for teacher retirement? Well, they've been doing it as a practice since 1973. So every time that money comes out of the literary fund and goes to offset teacher retirement in the general fund, then that reduces the amount of money that they can make loans for. And so again, the practice has gone back to taking money from the literary fund and using that to offset a general fund cost for teacher retirement. $51.2 million in lottery funds, lottery profits are being taken from the lottery fund and used to, again, just put in the general fund and offset general fund costs.
Lottery funds, what are lottery funds often, they're primarily directed for education?
Yes.
So if I'm understanding this right, this is 150-plus million dollars that the Governor is diverting from, potentially from public education, from the general fund at least. Well, from, potentially from public education to other uses.
Well, it is from the general fund.
It's from the general fund, yes.
Which funds?
Education.
Education, social services.
Public safety, you know, just the things that you have around.
I just wanted to make sure I understood. Thank you.
Okay. On to the next part, something good for us. The flexible cut, local aid to the state, whatever you wanna call it. Mark's already talked about that and built into his estimates that those dollars will again return back to the county. We won't have to ensure that the state has those. All other additional state revenues altogether, as you can see, don't add up to a large amount in the scope of what the county budget is. The total increase for school funds, and yes, someone, I think Supervisor Gabriel mentioned the exact number, 615-891, when the schools went back, looked at their money they're receiving, looked at what their average daily membership was. This is the number that came out. And of that amount, $490,000 is what the state earmarked for the 2% salary increase for only instructional SOQ positions. The question was asked last time if the 2% salary increase, can, do you have to do it? And in this case, you do have to provide the 2% salary increase or you don't get the $490,000. On the other side of that, the SOQ instructional positions represent only about 48% of all the positions in the school division. So to give the 2% to all of the positions, it's $1.6 million. But the state's only gonna give you $490,000 for it. That's a pretty wide spread. And with that, we're to the end. And we'll have, I don't think there are many questions on my part. Everybody seems pretty versed on that. But if you have other questions for Mark, I'm sure we'll be glad to answer those.
Just a comment. I hope that the media cut this part real well because you often hear people talking, and they make the assumption that the state is giving 2% to every employee, you know, in our county school system. They go, the state's giving the schools 2%, y'all gonna give them 2% on top of it, you know? And so they misinterpret what's written into the paper and, or written into the news media. And that it, I hope that this part is clear to our citizens out there that, and when I looked at the school board's budget, and it was talking about 48% of their employees, and that we would have to make up the other part, you know? And so I guess it looks good if you don't know what's going on.
I say right on, Mr. Brown.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Thank you very much. All right. Do I have a motion to go out of work session?
Aye. Second.
Been moved in seconded. Real call, please.
Mr. Curry?
Aye.
Ms. Parkes?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Chair of the House?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, and County Attorney's Report?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to remind the Board that disclosure statements are due tomorrow, January 15th. Disclosure statements are due tomorrow, January 15th, by 5:00. If you have any sentiment, please do so if you can. We don't wanna be cited in the audit.
Might have to pay a fine or something.
Yeah, that's pretty good fine.
Morning, do you mind, I know I dropped mine off, and it's almost identical. There was a couple additional pieces of property. If you don't mind looking at mine and see if I've left anything out by chance, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. County Administrator's Report?
Mr. Chair, just a couple items. The General Assembly, as you're well aware, is in session. So we're closely watching their activity right now. Our legislation on the Senate side is moving forward. And hopefully, we'll have news on the House side pretty soon on how things are going there. But we're watching their activity and hopeful that they don't fiddle with the budget too much unless they add some back. Also, just wanna mention to you that this Friday and next Monday are recognized as state holidays due to Lee Jackson Day and Martin Luther King Day. And the county offices observe those holidays as well. And I know that Angie took up the Caffers during the break. I know we've sent copies out to everybody's home. But if you need an extra copy or have a need for one, let us know. And the Caffers are also online if you need them, so. And that's all I have.
Okay. Supervisor Creed?
Just one thing that I wanted to mention. I was contacted by the Minister, the President, Chairman Church, and Bishop, which is right for, come down the hill to Main Street and Courthouse is right there. What he was wanting to know is whether we had immediate plans for any use... plans for any use in the old yellow building that we built up there, right outside courthouse. What they have, they have a red door on the church, which is always open to all of the people who are in need or out and about, don't have a place to stay the night, and this kind of thing. And it's kinda outgrown, or facilities, and he wanted to know if we had any immediate use for that old building, that maybe they could spruce it up a little bit and make it a place for these folks to get out and have some shelter. I think they give them a meal every morning and send them on their way. So, he just asked if I'd bring it up and see if, what they thought of it, and if we were going to do something in the next three or four months, then of course, that would be something that would work. If it's something that we don't have to or don't need to dispose of for a year or so, then it would probably be something that they would be very much interested in.
Well, do they, like, when they have it at their church, I mean, it's like they're responsible and liable and everything because it's on church property, and I don't know what kind of supervision they might have, but if they were to move into something that we owned, how does all that work?
I'm sure that we could set up the paperwork to say what we wanted to say, so.
Well, I'm looking at, it's a county-owned building, I'm looking at, and these are, I guess, sort of homeless people, so to speak. The liability, huh?
It's called to our house.
To our house, but whatever it is. The liability that the county incur for letting people stay there, whether, and, I mean, whether, and we have some items stored there in that facility.
We're using it for storage right now.
Using it for storage. Now, do we have to go and rent storage to let them have it? And utilities, did somebody say there wasn't a bathroom in there or something? Or is it a bathroom?
I'm not aware of how that, the interior of that structure, I don't think there's a bathroom facility in there, but the biggest, the biggest concern is we would have to relocate all the, all the items that are stored there. Now, that's easy to do if that's something the board wants us to do, but.
On one hand, I, I really would like to see us help people. On the other hand, I think we assume a lot of liability.
Well, you know, it does bring up the whole issue of homeless in the, within the county, and it's something that we've never really talked about as a board. It's something that, you know, we, we know is out there, we know that there's schoolchildren, there are homeless, and we know that they arrive at school, but then they might not have a place to go back to, and I don't know if that's something that, maybe since our county is larger and maybe because of the times, but it is an issue out there. And I think what's been happening is like what you brought up, Carrie, churches and other organizations have been working to handle the problem, but we don't have a place that's county-sponsored that some of other places have that, you know, is available for this. I don't know if this is something that, I don't really know how to handle it, but I know it's an issue, and I know that, you know, it affects people, all ages.
Just related to the specific request, I mean, mostly out of my own ignorance, I mean, I would, I would personally like to see, you know, maybe staff drop just a short list of kind of pros and cons about how this could be used, because, I mean, if it is a high-use thing, or if there's significant liability that the county would incur, then this, that could factor into the decision. I mean, right now, I just don't know enough. I mean, I think it's, it's a great idea, but again, like, how to actually deal with it is, is unclear.
And I, I really don't know the whole picture of it myself. Like I said, I was, I got this over an email, and it's actually Chris's district.
Well, the other question I have in the back of my mind is, all right, we're getting ready to set up a shelter, homeless shelter. I don't know, I'm not a government attorney, but the first thing that's screaming in my head is zoning, and it's in the town of Christiansburg, and can we set up a homeless shelter on the street corner directly across from Christiansburg's, you know, townhouse?
Well, you know, the thing of it is there is that the church is, which is directly across the street.
Right, but I think we're probably zoned commercial there on that corner originally. And if we start using it as a homeless shelter, I think there's gonna have to be some hoops that we're going, or, or somebody's gonna have to jump through, and again, I'd rely on Marty, but that's the first thing that's, that's coming to my head on top of liability because you have issues, and I, so.
I think it's St. Thomas Episcopal Church. It's St. Thomas Episcopal Church, which is on the street across from, from that building that we have in, you know, that lineup building, yeah, you did, but it's St. Thomas, yeah, Episcopal Church, I think he wrote to a lot of us.
That was where Father Scott was, right?
What?
That was where Father Scott was?
Yes.
Father Scott was at the Anglican Church.
Oh, that's right, okay, there it is, all right. Well, one of the things that I, I got an email also, and so, I think we all did.
Individually, we all did.
But I believe they had mentioned that they were gonna do some renovation, and they wanted to pay rent, is that not correct?
I think they are willing to work with us in any way that, you know, just need some space, 'cause they don't have enough space for the homeless that they have, and they would like to separate the men and women, especially women who have children, maybe keep them, let them stay at one spot, and the men is their other. I don't know all the ins and outs of it, most of it probably got, you may have got them from him, but I sent it out to everybody.
I got it from him.
I got it individually.
But, you know, I worry more about the zoning. I get into positions where, if you're gonna change the usage of the building, I might have to bring it up to code, and, you know, these things aren't easy to do.
Well, what, all I'm saying is, there's enough interest here to look at it, see what it would take, and then make a decision, I don't know.
I would be interested in investigating.
Everybody okay?
Can I sign out?
All right, we'll look at it, and I agree with that, so I don't have any, I just know there's gonna be some hurdles to climb, so, all right. Ms. Perkins.
Okay, I just brought one thing, two things. One has to do with VACO, and I'm turning in the papers that I got from VACO to serve on the committees there so that the board can approve our, my going there to represent this board on the VACO committees that are out, the two that I've been asked to serve on. And then, the only liaison meeting that I've really had thus far in the new year has to do with the airport, and I had hoped I have a better map, and I will next time, to show you just exactly what is gonna be done there, where the interchange is going on the bypass.
South Gate.
And the fact that South Gate from where it comes, right now, South Gate to the point, you remember where the Virginia, old Virginia Tech Visitor Center was, that little White House, there's a stoplight there. So, Tech Center Drive is going to have a new name, it's gonna be Research Drive, I think, but it will be going, and this is a map, and I'll show it to you, but it will be going all the way around the airport, so it comes out over, over here at that point. You won't be able to access the bypass from there. It will be all, the, the road will be removed, and it will be used to place buildings on. Then, the other part is that the Corporate Research Center is down in this area, and will extend this way somewhat, so when you all, I'll pass it around, you might not be able to tell much, the actual airport landing strip is here, and this is really the environmental assessment. It took us forever to get that approved, because at this point where it comes out behind that building that used to be the Visitor Center, there is a grove of oak trees, and it's, they've been there for a very long period of time, and there's all, there, there's also a little bit of a wetlands down in that area, close to that, but not in the same spot. So, we have redrawn the line several times to be sure that we skirt those trees, and we do not have to take any trees down. In fact, when you go around and go through them, you will, as you begin to get on the new drive, you'll see a few trees, but.
Will there be any parking near the roots of the trees?
What?
Will there be any parking near the roots of the trees?
No, nothing comes near the trees, absolutely nothing. And except for just a small portion of the road as you're going out, but it doesn't disturb any trees at all, but there are trees on both sides of the old, the old drive. And the airport, of course, is being extended, and part of that is so that we can have the corporate jets come in, and that we can completely, they can completely fuel. Right now, there are, Virginia Tech has two jets. One is owned by Virginia Tech, period, and the other one is owned by Virginia Tech and Freital Walden. And then, we do have another jet that is stationed there at the airport, and these are citations, these, a couple of them are, so they're very large jets. The old Hokey hangar will be demolished. We had to get special permission again because it's a historic building, so the old hangar, it was built in the early 40s, it's, or earlier, and it has, it was built mostly out of cinder block, and if you know cinder block, it does disintegrate, and it's beginning to disintegrate. The, there will be a new hangar that it will be built. Now, remember, much of what's going on over there at the airport, particularly with reference to the extension of the runway and what have you, is supported by the FAA, which gives the bulk of the funds. The state then contributes a small amount, and the locality contributes a very small amount, so, or the local authority, not the locality, but the local authority contributes a very small amount of money. So, the bulk of the funding is really from the FAA. Now, for the new hangars, that's not necessarily true, and so, there will have to be a collection from the individuals or the corporations that want to store their planes there. Right now, the plan's called for enough room for four jets to be in there, two large ones and two of a smaller size. So, the airport is moving, everything has to come together at once. The buildings for the dairy sites and the cow barns, we call them, that are up there on the hill, they have to go, and Tech is planning on moving all of those to White Thorne, I think, that was the last I heard, I don't know, we haven't dealt with that on the airport authority, but the reason they have to go is that they're in the, the runway protection zone. On the other end of the runway protection zone, if you all know where Hynnaub is, those of you who've looked around here a long time, this is toward the Ella Valley. Nothing can be built up there because, again, that is a very, it is a high obstruction, and so, nothing can be put on the top of that mountain, it can be down lower. And I just think that maybe the, the real, as I told you before, the real problem now is to try to keep the deer out of the airport, and so, since it is a safety issue, and believe me, it is a safety issue, the fence that we're putting up, be, have to be a very big buck to be able to get over that fence, and so, that is a safety issue, and we will receive some FAA funding for that, too. The airport, within about an 18-month period of time, 18-month, two years, somewhere in that category, VDOT, the college, the airport authority, everybody will have to come together and get all the, the projects all have to be done at one time, so that's what we're looking at right now. It's quite a, it's quite an undertaking from all sources, but I will try to find other answers for you if you want to. I'll pass this around, you may not be able to tell anything by it, but at least you can see what's going on with that particular area. And otherwise, that's it. I don't know, I should be thanking people for something, I think, but nevertheless, happy new year.
And Mr. Brown?
Okay, the first thing that I have is that several months ago, the juvenile detention center superintendent came before this board and, and made a presentation, and it was regarding the, the needs assessment, and also the need for, to renovate and upgrade the, the building. Several of the commission members will be traveling to Stanton on Friday to tour a facility in Stanton that's very similar to what we have in size and so forth that, that we have here in, in New River. So, hopefully, we can travel there and tour and ask some questions and get some ideas before we come back and, and chime in further on what we have over there. Second thing, I had an opportunity on January 5th to attend the, the Long Shot McCoy Foreign Rescue Holiday Dinner, and also I got the, the privilege of, of installing their offices for 2013. Excellent time, I think they had, within, or several charter members there, I think it was four, total of four, with over 204 or 5 years of service, I mean, that's, there were charter members on the, on the squad, I think it was one there, and they had his stripes on the uniform, and I think that if he got any more stripes, they got to put them on his leg. And then, on this past Thursday, the 12, several of us got to attend the Christmas Dinner, Holiday Dinner down at Shawville Rescue Squad, and they talked about changing it around, it seems like a, a couple weeks after Christmas, but I thought it was great because when you have five rescue squads and five fire departments, it's kinda difficult to try to get to all of them when things are going on. I got to make it to Ryan, and the same night Ryan was having theirs, I think Christiansburg had theirs, and Rescue Squad, and maybe the fire department at the same time, you can't make all of these things just to make an appearance to represent this board, but we had a wonderful time at the Shawville Rescue Squad, it was.
Good, that's what.
Yeah, that's what you wanna say. Go ahead and talk for me in a bit, 'cause you had a good time.
No, 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 you just took, I did have a good time.
But the successes and, and that, they're, matter of fact, they changed the captain to, not, rest, the, the, he used to be Captain Shigler at the McCoy Rescue Squad, they changed the bylaws, and he's a rescue chief now, and I don't know whether, I think they might have changed Captain Abrams, he's a rescue chief now, so, I guess it puts them all on the, on the same level, and when somebody walks into the Foreign Rescue Commission, say, hey, chief, I guess about 15 people jump up.
Everybody in the room.
But we had a, we had a great time, food was great, and the closing part where they had all these small gifts and things wrapped up, every, what was it, about 80 people, I guess, and they had enough gifts and had eight or 10 left over. Everybody, when they pulled a name out of the, the pot, it was your, your ticket, they had large gifts, smalls gifts, and things like that, you got to go over and pick a gift, and you couldn't shake it, couldn't listen to it, whatever, you just had to pick it, and so on, and then, when your number came up, you could either take an individual's gift or go to the table and get another gift, so it was lonely there, I think, she must have lost her. there, I think. She must have lost her gift about 15 times. And then they had small gifts. There was like, yeah, some kind of cream that Mary got and Gary's wife got.
I drank mine the whole time because I wanted it so badly.
She got a nice look. I've got, I think some, somebody got animal crackers. And there were some gift cards and so to speak.
I got a puff.
Yeah. And, but it was really, it was really good. And the, and I can say this, the three rescue squads I did get to visit over the holidays, I believe that the morale in those squads are just as high as it can be. And you look at Ryan, remember Ryan, they started with 19 members and they're up to 38 members. And they might be looking to us to sort of expand their facilities out there a little bit. And the number of calls and, they got a special award, too. The Life Fort 10 Award that was presented to him that he's talked about. And out of all the, I guess, rescue squads across the state, they were, or they were selected for this real special award.
All of them out of the...
That this area.
All, the whole state.
Yeah.
And then narrowed down to the top 60 and maybe were wanted out of all of them down to the top 60.
Yeah. And that is the very special award. So, that's it.
Alright, Supervisor Bead.
Thank you, that is what I wanted to do. I wanted to thank you.
Oh, yeah. Um, we always have a word of the week at our school. And this week, it's two words, positive attitude. And one of the things I really enjoyed about that, going to that dinner, was just there was so much positive energy in the room and the dedication of the volunteers. It really shone through. And they love their jobs. And it, and it just, you know, here we came, let's see, it was Nat and Bill and Gary and I, and we just felt like we were right in there with the family. I mean, it was great. It was really, really warm and, and great. So we enjoyed that, I think, all of us. But, okay, just want to remind you, in December, we got an invitation, I believe everyone, to attend. The Dialogue on Race Committee is having a special meeting on January 19th, this Saturday, from 10 to 2, at the Blacksburg Recreation Center on Patrick Avenue. They would like, for any of us that would like to attend, or Mr. Meadows to attend, we just need to let them know RSVP because they are going to have lunch. The Human Relations Committee that was originally formed, I think, in the 1960s with Montgomery County, they're involved with this. And the discussion is going to be what it means to be an African American in Montgomery County at this time. And I think the feeling is, they've had some meetings and they sort of want to involve as many citizens as possible and community leaders. And I think they had the mayor from Christiansburg coming and maybe the town manager and the school superintendent and the board member. So, anyone that would like to attend, it would be Saturday from 10 to 2. So I was supposed to bring that up to, Penny wrote me a reminder and I'm glad she did because I had, I had the invitation and I had it sitting by my calendar, but this is a good reminder for all of us. I think I've been doing something like this before and it was really beneficial. It's been a few years. The other thing I wanted to hand my Education Committee VACO appointment in, so I'd like to serve on that. And then last but not least, I want to congratulate Jim for being chair again and Bill for being vice chair. And one of the things that I sort of shared with different members, I wanted to share it with everyone, was I really hope this year, since it's a new year, that we can do something to develop some, even further our relationships with the town of Blacksburg and the town of Christiansburg Town Council members, as well as continue our relationship with the school board. And I think, I brought this up before, I, I know that we didn't have a really fantastic attendance last time. We tried to get everyone together, but maybe if we could set some specific times aside, and it doesn't necessarily have to be for the town councils, even if we could just have a sit-down sort of dinner face-to-face. I don't know, we could have an agenda item. But I think it's really important to further the relationships between board member and council members and not just through the town, county liaison group, but for all of us to be able to interact. Because, you know, some of these, some of the people to those two councils are newer and I don't know them as well as I knew some of the older ones. So I was thinking that, and I don't know how the rest of you feel about it because I know that all our times are limited, but to me, this has been something that's sort of been on my mind the last year. And I think I brought it up a couple of times. And I think what I see is, we are a whole community together. And, you know, the towns are such a vital part of our county and the county's a vital part of the towns. And we all have citizens and we all, you know, I, I see us needing to work together on so many issues. And it's good to know who you're working with. So that's just sort of something I'd like to see if we could maybe, you know, do a little bit more of. And then again, I think we did a great job with the community meetings. And I think, you know, I, I think I heard tonight and I've heard from other citizens, like, you know, when we were asked, were we going to continue that maybe through the budget? Or were we going to have another meeting, you know, or so, you know, during budget time? And I think that would be a time where you can get, you know, people to sort of tell you and talk one-on-one and exchange information. So I would, I would like to see us do something with that. But those are just some thoughts I had for the new year. And I do appreciate the way that Jim and Bill come back with, you know, what happens at the county liaison, town meetings and school board meetings. And I think, you know, to continue that, keep us informed so that, you know, we know what's out there because you never know when somebody's going to stop you on the street and start talking about something. You're like, what? You know? But it just keep up the good information. And, and I really enjoy working with everyone. And I hope we can continue that and spread it out a little bit with the other local governments. And that's all.
Okay, Supervisor Bead?
Start off by wishing my wife a happy birthday.
Oh, you're going to get in trouble. Do you need to go to the parkway?
I don't think I need to go to the parkway, but that's a...
I need to make cream, Mary got.
Yeah.
It does, it does work. It does, it does work.
Well, anyways, the planning commission met in, last week and voted down an ordinance in regards to regulating chickens in residential areas. And I just wanted to pass that along. I still think that it may end up coming before us. I think some of you have seen an email about some of the things that have gone out. But I wanted to pass that along as far as the liaison sessions. The general consensus was that they thought it wasn't a problem and therefore they, as Gary said earlier, don't fix something that's not broke. And I, I disagree with the commission, the planning commission in regards to that aspect. But at the same time, I, I wanted to let y'all know that was the case. Is, that's primarily my report. I don't have anything else.
And Mr. Gabriel?
Thanks. I just had, just a few things here. First of all, I was going to talk a little bit about the school board budget and stuff, but I sent you the email and that, that's basically all I know. They met today over on the other side of the building in the, the new side of the, the building C, building C, right? So I'm sure we'll be hearing more about that, about the school board budget in the coming years. The one thing that, that wasn't discussed here today and wasn't in that, in the packet of information, was that at the meeting last week, they did discuss very briefly the $400,000 that we had set aside for capital improvements. And they will be sending a request to us sometime soon, if we have...
I've actually got that today and we'll have it on the next board agenda.
Okay. So we're going to discuss that soon. The only other thing, the only, well, two, two other things that, that I wanted to mention is, one, just kind of, well, one major thing and then just kind of subsections within it. It's late, I'm tired. So I'm going to say this quickly, is that some hopes for the new year is that, just kind of echo some of the things that Mary said, is that I really do hope that we will be able to meet with town of Blacksburg, town of Christiansburg and the school board more often. Is that, you know, in my first year on the board last year, we met with only one of those bodies and only once. And I really think that, you know, we really need to meet with all of them at least once a year. You know, it can be a very informal thing. And I know everybody's busy and even if not all of us can attend. And I know I probably won't be able to attend some of these meetings. But I think we do need to schedule them because we need to, to continue that relationship, especially as we go forward with certain things that will definitely involve the town of Blacksburg, town of Christiansburg and, and the school board. I do hope as well that both Jim and Bill will continue to inform us and perhaps even keep us a little bit better informed, maybe in the coming year, about the individual meetings that you guys go to, be they, the, the kind of school board liaison meetings or the, or the town meetings with the mayors and things like that. Just kind of let us know. Just, just kind of basic informational stuff about any things that, that might be coming up on our agenda, on our radar. So hopefully, that'll continue. You know, for me, I know, you know, I live on email, so a brief email or something like that, once every week, once every two weeks, something like that, would be very useful for me. At least, or a phone call would be, would be fine as well. Related to that, too, and, and I'm glad Ms. Cox brought this up, and I'm glad Mary brought it up as well, is something that I've been pushing and I will continue to push, is that I want more community conversations. I want them specifically in the budget season. And I really hope that we can schedule them as a board. If we can't schedule them, I'll just hold them. I'll go out and I'll advertise them in my district and, and I'll show up. Because I really enjoyed those meetings, the ones that I was able to attend. We had 25 to 30 people each time at all across the county. There weren't repeat people, there were new people, there were people I've never seen at meetings before coming and talking to us. And we were able to actually engage with them and have conversations. And I really hope that, think that it needs to continue, especially in the budget process, but throughout the whole course of the year. And then finally, you know, I just hope that, I know that this is going to be, hopefully not as bad of a, you know, budget discussion this year as it's been, as it was last year. I just hope that we're not going to get into a situation in which kind of the factionalism that sometime came out in the, the last budget discussion, you know, us versus them, whoever us and them are. You know, this is not necessarily directed towards a board, but it's directed to kind of anybody who's listening, is that, you know, that we are all a community, you know, despite our differences across the board. And I hope that we remember that and we're, we're trying to get, you know, get ahead together. And so, we'll, we'll work on that in different ways, but that's what we're all aiming for. So. And other than that, happy new year.
Okay. And now it's time for my report. I want to thank everybody for honoring, honoring me with the position of the board chair again and having Bill as my first chair. I ask that if you feel like I'm not giving you proper information, don't hesitate to email me or call me.
Well, we've got the information on the hem. We do have that information.
You what now?
We've got all the information on the hem.
You don't have it all.
Oh, no.
But I will not add any more tonight. I agree with this meeting, with the two towns. We've tried to do it, we did it one time, and we had not the best attendance. We went and had the picnic out at...
Down at East Montgomery.
East Montgomery. And it was a great time. We had it catered. And I, I feel we need to extend that invitation again. We'll be going to Richmond, I guess, after our next meeting for...
And I was going to mention that, the, the entire Blacksburg Town Council is going to VACO Legislative Day. I know a couple of Christiansburg board members or council members are going as well. So, I know there's usually a couple from our group that goes, but the more, the more are welcome, so.
Who else going?
You and I and Nat. Are you going, Nat?
What?
Are you going to Richmond?
Try to.
Okay. Anybody else?
It depends.
I think she's...
Yeah, I know. So, two for sure, third maybe, and then Craig will go, of course.
That's good.
And if you have anything you want us to go after that we don't already have on our list, let us know. That's what we're...
Go after money.
Well, Mary's the money lady.
I'm the money lady. I go for it.
Money for schools.
And I'd like to hope that we're going to have a very good working relationship this year, as we have in the past, and continue with all of our individual projects that we're working on.
Oh, boy, you're stretching that room.
Other than that, Tango John, Mr. Brown?
You know, if, you know, I was sitting there thinking, when we, when we met down at East Montgomery at that, at that, at that park and we had a fire attendance. And if we're going to meet in the summertime, maybe we ought to look at Mid County Park. And it would give centrally where the people from Blacksburg and, and Christiansburg could kind of, kind of get to the Mid County Park. Because when did we start? At 6:00 or something like that?
Yes, sir.
And it was on a work day at that particular evening. And so, if we think about hosting it one other time at the two towns in the summer, that we might think about Mid County Park. So people don't have to go so far. But it was nice that they got a, a chance to see the shelter and everything.
Yeah, beautiful pavilion and park. Last year, I attended the Pulaski picnic. And that's a very nice event, too. And as we get the invitation out this year, it might be something we need to consider going to, so.
Might be something we need to see about Bill going.
Yes. Yeah, their, their park is outstanding.
Yes, it is.
And, and you know, one thing we forgot, we forgot to mention that actually what the school board meets, they're supposed to be held quarterly. We're supposed to take turns holding them like we do it and then they do it. But it was originally set up to be done quarterly.
Once a quarter, yeah.
Yeah.
I think the problem we have, though, is attendance.
It's built, it'll be done easily.
Yeah. Alright, if there's nothing else, we'll adjourn. We'll see y'all.